The regular meeting of the Board of Education for December 19th, 2017 is called to order. Welcome to everyone present and for joining us tonight. Any item that will be voted on this evening has been posted as required by state law. The meeting will be televised live and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the Board website for replay times. This meeting is also being streamed live on our PPS TV services website. As a reminder, we have our PPS Ombudsman Judy Martin, she's back in the back there, attending all of our regular Board meetings. Specifically Judy will be here to listen to public comments and if appropriate provide additional support to families who want or need it. In addition to being here this evening Judy can also be reached at (503) 916-3045 or at ombudsman@pps.net. Also this evening we have Mary Kane, a staff attorney, who's joining us at the Board table on behalf of the interim General Counsel. And in addition Director Sparza Brown is out of town this evening as this morning she welcomed a new grandchild into her family, so she's not here. We also have interpreters with us this evening and I'd like to ask them to come forward at this time, introduce themselves in the language they'll be interpreting and inform the audience where they'll be standing during the meeting. Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Lucia Cabejo, I'm an interpreter in Spanish. If you need me, I'll be right near the door. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tatiana, I'm on the right side here, and we're talking in Russian. If you need a translation, please come over to us. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Before we get into our agenda items, I'd like to provide an overview of the business the Board will be conducting tonight. After our recognitions, we'll hear a report from our Superintendent and then we'll have public comment. We'll then receive a presentation from our outside auditor on our comprehensive annual financial report and then return the meeting towards, turn the meeting towards our schools where the Board will be asked to vote on the Kellogg Middle School master plan and also the Madison High School contracting process. Lastly, the Board will receive an update on the progress of the Harriet Tubman environmental assessment. And after our regular Board meeting tonight, the Board will convene into a work session to conclude work on the Superintendent's 2017-18 Goals and Evaluations Instrument as well as the Board operating protocols and code of conduct. We'd like to start our, off this evening, our formal part of our Board meeting, I'm going to ask Director Rosen to recognize one of our outstanding educators.
Thank you Chair Brim Edwards. The Board is very excited to hear that Cleveland High School teacher Brenda Gordon was named this year's recipient of the Oregon Outstanding Biology Teacher of the Year Award. The award is presented by the National Association of Biology Teachers which since 1961 has honored the top teacher in each state. I was lucky enough to have Brenda teach two of my children biology. She's an awesome teacher and researcher who's worked really hard and is very deserving of this honor. I'd like to invite Ms. Gordon to the staff table to provide a few comments.
It should be on.
I would just like to say that it was an honor last month to represent Cleveland High School and Portland Public Schools at the NABT Conference in St. Louis, Missouri. It's been awhile since Portland has had a teacher win this award, so I was very thrilled when I was selected as one of the, one of the 50 teachers to attend. But anyway, I'm very proud, I'm very proud of Cleveland High School. We do some fabulous things in terms of science there, but I have to stand on record as saying that I am only one of many talented science teachers in this district.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Would you like to, we're going to have a picture taken with you before you, before you leave? The quick exit, so Superintendent, Board, if you'd like to go in front of the dais. Mayor Vera Katz was a leader in the Oregon Legislature and she definitely was the boss of the city while she was mayor. But even with her many other responsibilities, she always had time for schools and students. We're going to take some time tonight to recognize the leadership and work she did on behalf of Portland's schools and students. Vera Katz viewed access to high-quality rigorous public education as an essential component of a successful state and a healthy, strong Portland community. She understood that for Portland, having a strong public school system was necessary for ensuring that families would choose to continue to live in an urban environment. Vera's work to enrich public education which would benefit all children was sustained through many years of service. She led in the legislature where she served as the Speaker of the House and as mayor she continued this commitment. She understood and used the bully pulpit to advocate for high-quality schools. Vera appreciated the use of data and was as an active member of the Leaders Roundtable in the Portland Bonoma Progress Board and she monitored the ups and downs of student achievement, sometimes to the chagrin of school superintendents and school board members. She was really focused on that data. She also hired a staff member to focus on education and be a leader in the community. That person was Carol Turner, who's, Carol's here tonight and Carol was also a former Portland School Board Member. Vera Katz had the ability to understand the complexities of the whole system and the importance of building partnerships to ensure that needs were met for students. She focused on early learning programs with the county and city commissioner Jim Franciscone. She helped build the SUN programs. She partnered with PCC and also PSU to build really a strong seamless pre-K through 20 education system here in the city. And of course Vera was a realist and knew that success required stable and adequate funding. While passage of ballot measure five occurred in 1990, there was a change in school funding however, but initially there wasn't a big financial impact on schools due to the growing economy. Despite this Vera knew that really the state needed to address its funding issues post-measure five and she helped initiate and seek funding and supported the Coalition for School Funding Now, a statewide nonpartisan group made up of parents, staff, business people, really advocates to keep the pressure on the legislature to adequately fund our schools. This is when I first met Mayor Katz. I was at the time an active parent with three young kids. I was swept up in the Coalition's work as was Director Rosen and Director Bailey. And then in the early 2000s, the recession hit and at the time I'd run for and was serving my first stint in the school board. So as the recession rolled on, the financial crisis increased and PPS faced the possibility of cutting 24 days off the school year, which would have been the shortest school year in the nation. And as you can see from this Doonesbury cartoon for a week, Gary Trudeau highlighted the really predicament that Portland's schools were in because of the financial crisis. And it was something like Doonesbury and just the energy of the parent community that really got Vera energized. PPS at the time had less than a million dollars in reserves and I think the other school districts in Portland, in the city of Portland, there's four other school districts, were in a similar situation. And midway through this school year, the state legislature continued to reduce our funding, our, that year funding levels. So not only did we not have any reserves, but also we ended, we're ending up the school year with about a 20 to 30 million dollar operating deficit. So, leading up to that, we had not a lot of money and we also had sort of impending negotiations with the teachers' union. And there was the potential of a major strike. We were looking at closing down schools for five weeks. But Vera was not going to allow that. She wasn't going to allow Portland Public Schools and the four other school districts in her city to really be the, be the districts in the entire country that had the shortest school year and whose students were hit hardest by the recession. So she brokered a deal that averted a strike. Teachers at the time, for those of you who were here, they voted to, and they volunteered to work for 10 days for free. And also at the same time Vera decided that we really needed to bring the community together because even with the teachers working for 10 days for free and a business income tax on local businesses, there still was a pretty significant hole. So she brought together a coalition and the result of that coalition included the county commission, but also parents, business people, teachers and other staff people to really put together a solution which would preserve our school year and allow us to sort of bridge and pass the recession. So with Mayor Katz at the helm, joined by teacher and school staff and parents, which would include a Director, we were younger then, Rosen and Bailey, and thousands of other parents around the city built a grassroots campaign and passed the country's only local income tax surcharge with a 58% rate. And this, that passage of the local income tax and the brokering, the agreement with the teachers, the Portland Association teachers to work for 10 days for free was just classic Vera. She could bring people together in a room and she organized, cajoled, prodded, she guided her elbows out and she had pretty sharp elbows if you run the receiving under them. But she was determined that under her watch as the mayor of the city, that she was not going to let our schools fail. She was energized and passionate about public schools and as a parent and Board Member, I feel really lucky to have had an opportunity to be a parent in Portland Public Schools and a Board Member at a time when we had a mayor who viewed her responsibilities not just to the city, but also to our schools and our students. And, you know, she, she knew fundamentally that the city's success was linked to the success of our students and our schools and time and again, not just in the 2000 recession, but you know, year after year, she thought of ways in which she could help our schools be better and also way, different ways that the city could support them. So with that, I'm going to ask Carol Turner, just come up briefly and make a few comments. And I should say, as Carol's walking up here, all those things that Vera did on behalf of education, there was a person in the back of the room sitting behind her and that was Carol, who was sort of a steadfast and patient advocate for our schools in a really difficult time. So Carol?
Thank you. It's a real privilege to be here and yes, we are, we're all younger then. And I haven't been in this building for many years, but my car seemed to know the way. Just like I was on autopilot thinking about the rest of the week and it somehow made that trip that I've made many times for 12 years as a school board member and then the mayor. And I welcome our new Superintendent. I look forward to it and it's good to see all of you. So, just one more bit of history, Julia did a great overview. I do think the, her leadership on the Oregon Education Act for the 21st century, House Bill 3565, really was a watershed for the state. I mean, it was controversial, it's evolved, it was affected by No Child Left Behind, but really for the first time in our state, I think it set very high challenging performance standards and it set the bar quite high for the state and that was a push for all of us. How we dealt with it can be debated, but I think it was a real important leadership aspect of Vera's. So it is a privilege to have worked with her and respect, I respect her greatly. And I've thought a lot about this last week, about her leadership capacity and I think a lot of it is that she held, she had really core values that she held true to and they really guided her actions. And she was also capable of keeping her, her ability to keep her vision for Portland always was in front of her, so it kind of maintained her core ability. You referred to her ability to be quite strong, but she knew ultimately that success would never just happen because City Hall wanted it. That it required committed partners and that that takes a lot of work and a lot of time to build and maintain those partnerships. And she had the capacity to bring out the best in people, especially in our other local leaders, in the business community, in the neighborhoods, education, government, nonprofit and so on. But I also think, I've reflected on, she really had the best, she could bring out the best in citizens. And we are very lucky in Portland to really have citizens who are committed, who want to contribute to our city and to our schools. And she could do that. She could really kind of empower people from all aspects of life to contribute and even sacrifice for the larger community. And I think we want to thank her that, thank her for that. But I am absolutely confident at this point in time that we also have other leaders and other people in our community and in this community of Portland Public Schools who have those same talents and those same skills, who can really bring forth the best in people so that everyone will step forward to really work for the common good and for the good of the whole. So with that, I wish you all the best. Thank you so much for your work. It's so important. It's so complex as you all know, but it's so important for the future of the children of Portland, which is what Vera cares about so deeply. Thanks.
Thank you Carol. Really nice to meet you. Anything else from other Board members?
I think it's interesting to just look at the different relationships that cities have, that large cities have with their urban school districts and sometimes the structural relationships are very different where city government actually has a certain degree of control with school districts, but also just the tone. And here in Portland, I think the, the tone of that relationship and the content of it is very discretionary. So it's individual leaders and mayors can really take very, play very different roles in terms of how they see the children of the city and the welfare of the children and what that means the relationship of the city should be with the school district. And I think as Carol was saying, you know, Vera Katz saw that as inextricably linked and, and each of our mayors has, has seen it, seen it differently. So I think it's incumbent upon us to always engage with our leaders and city government about the future of our city and the future of our children and that we are not this autonomous enterprise over here on the other side of the river thinking about how we're launching all these kids off into their successful futures. But like Carol said, that we're all working together really on that same mission and we should, we should do everything that we can to enhance that partnership. And she's, she was just a really shining example of what can be done when those, when people are working together.
Yeah, it would have been easy for her to just take a pass. They had, city had its own issues to deal with, but she didn't. And it, I believe we were at a huge inflection point in the early 2000s where this district could have gone the way of many other urban districts and because of Vera's leadership in partnership with many others, that didn't happen. So we were fortunate to have had her as a mayor for 12 years and all the good things she did for Portland Public Schools. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you again Carol for coming tonight. Next, this has been a busy week before the start of the winter break and I know the Superintendent has been out, out in schools and working hard. Why don't you share with us what, what's new and what's updated with district staff?
Good evening everyone. I very much appreciate the comments and the celebration in recognizing our former mayor because it also reminds me we are celebrating an untimely passing of another champion mayor. I'm coming from the city of San Francisco who also lost its mayor, Ed Lee, who was a tireless advocate for children, youth and families who I had a fortunate opportunity to work very closely with, who understood that a positive relationship between city government and its public school system can only benefit everyone. So my hat's off to, to Ed Lee as well. Well, tonight's the last meeting of 2017 and even though I've only been here about three months, I thought I would take the opportunity to reflect on a few highlights, to remind us of sort of in retrospect the good work and accomplishments that continue to happen all across the Portland Public Schools. There's an extraordinary collection of individuals, leaders, educators, support staff, students and our families that make up the Portland Public Schools. We just recognized Brenda Gordon of Cleveland High School who's been honored as Outstanding Biology Teacher of the Year. I've seen three of our art teachers, Kelda Van Patton of Da Vinci, Lilian Greenberg of Marysville, Sarah Brown of Ainsworth, won teaching awards from the Oregon Arts Education Association. We've observed Matthew Bacon-Brennis of Mount Tabor Middle who won Oregon Teacher of the Year Award. All of these folks have just become wonderful ambassadors for our public school system and our students, our extraordinary students. Our student athletes continue to excel in sports. Alex Slenning of Wilson won the state championship in cross-country. Our mighty Jefferson Democrats begin their chase for a repeat state championship in boys' basketball. And we're proud of all kinds of efforts across the organization. We're proud of our efforts in sustainability. Nancy Bond won a lifetime achievement award from the Intertwine Alliance and Woodland, led by its students, became one of just 94 schools in the US to attain green flag status from the National Wildlife Federation. And just yesterday, I was proud to announce Dr. Yvonne Curtis, who was just announced as PPS's new Deputy Superintendent of Instruction and School Communities, who I am looking forward to partnering in our work ahead. It is my intention to continue identifying a leadership team and the best talent for our school system that continue to help us address our work in front of us. I also continue to enjoy and be energized by my school campus visits. Most recently, I had the opportunity to visit classrooms at Rosa Parks School. Got to the chance to hear a performance by the orchestra class there as well as visit classrooms from across the grade levels. I also paid a visit to Grant High School at the Marshall Campus last week. Was impressed by the lessons I observed and the level of discourse in which students were engaged. And I'm continuing to work towards my goal of visiting every school in the district by year's end. We're committed to continue working to ensuring every one of our schools is a safe and supportive teaching and learning environment. And so we're proactively continuing to work at making sure that our drinking faucets, fountains are flowing with clean, safe water for our students to drink. Safe drinking water is now flowing at 11 schools, including Applegate, Atkinson and Chief Joseph where the faucets were just turned on this past week. And there remains much more work in front of us. We will of course keep working overtime to open Harriet Tubman and Roseway Heights Middle Schools. Last week, district leaders and myself, along with four Board members, met with the pioneer community to listen to their concerns and their questions. We want to thank everyone who turned out and provided input. After the winter break, we will continue to hold meetings to address the ongoing facility and programmatic needs and will identify opportunities for the community to continue voicing their concerns and to hear more specific details as they develop. Staff have also continued to meet with affected Head Start families currently located on the Applegate and Rice campuses and we look forward to meeting with native families in our Head Start program at those locations as well. I want to acknowledge that these campus moves and transitions are challenging. All of our students deserve the opportunity to thrive. With our dedicated Board of Directors, our administrators and most of all our talented and determined teachers and staff, we will continue the task of making PPS a great urban school district. As we pause in the coming days to celebrate with family and friends, I wish everyone a happy holiday. Thank you.
Thank you. So next we have public comment. I just want to shortly, quickly review our guidelines. We want to thank everyone for coming. We appreciate the opportunity to hear public input as it informs our work. We look forward to hearing your thoughts, reflections and concerns. Our responsibility as a Board is to actively listen and have our electronic devices turned off. Board members and the Superintendent will not respond to comments or questions during public comment, but our Board Office will follow up on Board-related issues raised during public testimony. Guidelines for public input emphasize respect and consideration. Any complaints about individual employees should be directed to the Superintendent's office as a personnel matter. Presenters have a total of three minutes to share your comments. Begin by stating your name and spelling your last name. During the first two minutes, the green light will be on. When you get down to a minute, the yellow light will be on and when three minutes is up, the red light will appear and we'd ask that you just respectfully wrap up your comments at that time. And so with that, I'd like to ask Ms. Hewson for the first two members of the public who have signed up.
Michael Hulsey and Mark Bond.
It's H-U-L-S-E-Y. And I'm here about the after-school programs and I know there's a couple of us here, I don't know all of the representatives. If you guys can raise your hand. Since I only have three minutes, I'm going to try to get this going quick because I've a lot to say in three minutes. It's not a lot of time. As you know, PPS will no longer allow for-profit and nonprofit organizations to utilize Peach Jar for communicating with or marketing to parents. One of the reasons PPS gave for abandoning Peach Jar is that it's the district's responsibility to ensure resources are focused on student achievement. This is a quote from a parent's email that the Board received yesterday. EG Robotics was CC'd on it. I quote, "EG Robotics offers an after-school program at Capitol Hill Elementary School. My son participated for two years and loved every minute of it. His enthusiasm for robotics grew and his interest in STEM-related careers increased. With the emphasis on filling the STEM career pipeline, it would be a mistake to remove the ability for parents to learn about such programs." End quote. This is just one example of an after-school program contributing to student achievement. We program providers have received dozens of emails and support, not just for our programs, but for a direct communication channel between us and parents. In fact, we put out a survey last week and over 600 parents responded. Nearly 100% said that they respond, excuse me, that they prefer email flyers. Not one parent answered that they did not want to hear from us. Unfortunately, the PPS Flyer Distribution Process Review Committee did not put out any surveys. They did not ask parents, students or program providers to give their input. This decision was made by a committee in the span of one month over four meetings. There is a growing cynicism directed towards school districts and its leaders, not including the community in the decision-making process, might be one cause of this cynicism. The second, the second reason that the district gave for discontinuing Peach Jar was that there are inherent equity issues with regards to the communities targeted for events and activities from non-governmental organizations. Flyers are not being translated for our non-English speakers and the bulk of flyers coming from non-government organizations are going to schools with higher socioeconomic population. This statement is true, but I'm completely baffled at how doing away with Peach Jar will help resolve this issue since this doesn't change where programs are offered. All it does is make it more likely that programs enrollment will suffer, which will force us to go out of business, which will mean even less opportunities for a lesser number of kids. Is that equity? I'd like to read a portion of another parent's email that was sent to the Board yesterday. I quote, "All kids everywhere should have the same opportunities, but because all kids everywhere don't, PPS says, 'Let's make it really hard for any kids anywhere to hear about opportunities that are..." about opportunities that are available.' If equity is the issue here, why isn't the emphasis on requiring external providers to advertise and offer their classes in more schools and more neighborhoods, or similar remedy that opens up more opportunities to more kids, rather than shutting down opportunities that already exist?"
Thank you.
I actually have a suggestion. Can I wrap up with that?
One sentence, yes, please.
It's definitely not one sentence.
Well, then, if it's more than one sentence, maybe you could email it to us? Did you say it's one sentence? If it's one sentence, go ahead.
I do want to respect other people's time, but I will email it to you guys. It's a suggestion to replace Peach Jar with a nonprofit that will act as Peach Jar, but give its revenue to as grants and scholarships to get more people involved and more schools involved. So it's a solution. It's not burying our head in the sand, and it's not just ending this, you know, because my program's going to end.
Thank you. And please send it to us.
I'm up. I'm Mark Bond. I am the College and Career Coordinator at Alliance High School. Some of you may not know about us. People in the community not knowing is somewhat understandable, yet within PPS, it is not, and many still don't. We are Alliance High School, a PPS high school, at the Meek and Benson campuses. We are not a CBO, a community-based organization, though we often get lumped in with them. The students I support comprise the least represented and most underserved in the city. My students are amazing. They deal with hardships many from the comprehensives cannot remotely fathom. They have often been discarded by the schools that they come from. They have many issues, but also numerous gifts and strengths. A couple of years ago, in this room, a now-former board member referred to my students as "those students." It is my privilege to serve and support those students, and they are your students. One highlight, our FAFSA completion rate, and it's a really big issue these days within the state and the district, and for many years, our graduates have been in the 90-plus percentile completion rate, and I just want you to know that. We are not, our students don't just fade away. I want to talk about the latest construction bond. We were on it, and then we weren't. Bear in mind, Meek is a former elementary school, and our Benson campus, if you can call it that, is located in a CTE wing, and that is a travesty. We deserve our own site with full wraparound services. Speaking of CTE, three years ago, there were 19 programs in all of PPS. Alliance had four of those programs, two full-time, two half-time. Now the district has 65-plus. That is great, and yet we still have four, only one of which now is full-time. Our cafeteria had the highest level of radon of any room in the district. Only now, two years later, are the levels acceptable, and that is unacceptable. I coach our basketball team, but we have no gym. Our school deserves a gym for practice, but more importantly, for PE, for all of our students. On a slightly lighter note, my friends and family have been very generous in donating to the team, but if any of you would like to make a contribution to our team, please let me know, and I will get you a tax letter posthaste. And lastly, Alliance High School being an afterthought for many years is an equity issue, and PPS has let these students down time and time again, and that is shameful. I ask that you please do not forget about them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next, we have Edith Sterling and Jimmy Applehans.
Is Edith Sterling here? Yep. Okay, great.
Kelly Rundle, R-U-N-D-L-E. Hello, board, hello, superintendent. I'm here today to speak on behalf of the intensive skills students at Pioneer and how your recent decision to move Pioneer to Rice and Applegate impacts them. I have been an intensive skills teacher at Pioneer for the past seven years. The majority of my students are on the autism spectrum, and many are nonverbal. I would like to give these kids a voice today. When I think about the move to Applegate, I try to envision my students there. One of my students is a refugee. He's nonverbal, has experienced a great deal of trauma in his young life. For this student, sitting for five minutes in the classroom is an accomplishment. It is essential that he walk frequently, otherwise he bangs his head, bites, and cries, and hits staff. He can't handle being in one place for more than a few minutes, and he likes being around kids and adults. Holiday works for this student. There are lots of places for him to walk and many different directions for him to take. At Applegate, he will walk a single hallway, and it will be impossible to get his sensory needs met. Holiday works well for all of my students because of its unique design and spaces outside of the classroom, which allow for quiet spaces to calm and get sensory needs met, spaces that are outlined in my students' IEPs. At the Holiday Youngson Building, my students are able to take long walks inside on rainy days and are able to take long walks outdoors while still remaining on the school grounds. Taking long walks is a de-escalation strategy for many Pioneer students. Applegate is a small school with a single hallway. It is not fenced, has no playground, and no gym. Applegate is in very close proximity to a park and a busy street. Many students at Pioneer are runners, and many students over the years are placed in my classroom for that reason. The Holiday Youngson Building has a large grass area with no trees. When a student starts to run during recess, staff has line of sight and is able to run after the student prior to them leaving the school grounds. Unfortunately, Applegate has very little grass area or school grounds. If a student happens to get out of sight at Applegate, they'll head directly into a public park, a busy street, strangers, and many places to hide. Applegate lacks the essential school components, such as a gym, playground, kitchen, and library. If you want to include our kids in neighborhood schools, they need to be at a facility with the basic components of a regular school to practice skills for inclusion. My students practice library skills weekly and learn essential skills, such as appropriate volume, sitting while a story is being read, and learning how to find books that interest them. One of my longtime nonverbal students loves it when our librarian reads to him. He sits next to her, he helps her turn the pages, and smiles and giggles with excitement as she reads.
Can you wrap up your comments, please? Thank you. You can finish your sentence.
Okay. "You are favoring the students with advantages over students who have little to no advantages in life. I have visited the Applegate campus. It is not suitable for Pioneer students. Your decision needs to change."
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Jimmy Applehans, A-P-P-E-L-H-A-N-Z. I would like to thank the Portland Public School Board of Education for giving me the time to speak tonight. This is my third year as a school bus driver for Portland Public Schools, and I have a combined total of seven years of experience as a school bus operator. I am speaking to you tonight to continue the dialogue started by my coworkers Beth and Tim, who have addressed you at previous board meetings. Although our next negotiation meeting is set for the first week of January, we have not sat down to negotiate since the beginning of November, which means that our message is still the same. A proposed contract rollover with a wage freeze set forth by your negotiation team is frankly not going to cut it. One of the biggest concerns brought to us from our coworkers is the increasing cost of living in our city compared to our pay scale. Our wages are not keeping up with the sharp rental increases the city has seen in the past years. A report put out by OregonMetro.gov last year stated that between 2006 and 2015, rent in the Portland metropolitan area increased 63%. Our wages have clearly not kept up with this. Right now, the average cost of a one-bedroom apartment in Portland is $1,500 a month. Based on a 12-month wage, a driver with 14 years longevity takes home less than $1,300 a month. With these wages, a driver can't even afford the cost of a one-bedroom apartment. Soon, as special needs bus drivers, we will not be able to live in the communities that we serve. Another concern brought up by some of the drivers is that the $1.67 increase per hour given to everyone at the beginning of this year might have increased new hires coming in the door, but it has disenfranchised the experienced and capable drivers due to the fact that it equals a smaller percentage increase in wage the longer you've been driving for Portland Public Schools. I prepared a handout, and I think you'll be getting it afterwards to check out. It gives a rough estimate of the total average cost to train a new driver versus giving a raise to the experienced drivers. The bottom line on that is that it is more cost-effective to give our senior drivers a wage increase to encourage new drivers to stay with Portland Public Schools. Many of our drivers have left for better wages at TriMet, DHL, UPS, and FedEx. The cost of training new drivers, only to have them leave for better-paying jobs, is staggering. And I want to close by reminding you of a discrepancy that has been brought to your attention before, that a newly hired truck driver delivering food to our schools gets paid on their first year of service more per hour than a special needs school bus driver who has been working for Portland Public Schools for 24 years. Let me be clear that I'm not trying to say that these truck drivers do not deserve this pay. I am saying that we, as special needs bus drivers, deserve better than what you are giving us now.
Thank you. And if you give Ms. Hewson your, if you give Ms. Hewson your information, she'll get it to the board. Thank you.
Our last two speakers are Jenny Brixey and Sidney Roberts.
Hello, members of the board. My name is Jenny Brixey, B-R-I-X-E-Y. I'm a parent from the Applegate Head Start Program. My daughter currently attends the Native American Classroom. She graduated from the Native Early Head Start Classroom last year. Applegate is home to three other classrooms. There has been community built here. The loss of this Head Start is a hard blow to the community all too familiar with displacement. I want to thank you for your commitment to keep our two Native classrooms together. This intergenerational learning environment and continuum of care is an essential piece of Native pedagogy. These classrooms honor our children's identity as Indigenous people. They keep our community connected. Portland is the ninth-largest urban Indian community in the United States. The Indian Relocation Act of 1956, which encouraged Native people to leave their reservations to find work in cities, is one of the driving forces of this. The Native classrooms are critical for our Indigenous students and families, as it provides an early learning experience that is culturally responsive and trauma-informed. It helps families connect with one another and the larger Native community. These culturally responsive programs value cultural identity and education and honor it as a resiliency factor. Community is how we keep our culture alive in an urban setting. Despite gentrification and other systemic oppressions, these communities at Applegate have continued to thrive. When dealing with communities who have been impacted by the trauma of boarding schools, forced relocation and displacement, and overrepresentation in the child welfare system, trust is essential. Transparency and open communication builds trust, not back-room, closed-door decisions. Parents at Applegate were blindsided with a letter left in their children's box, not knowing if our Native classrooms will be dissolved and our children assimilated into other classrooms. I want to voice the frustration of other Applegate parents, grandparents, and caregivers who are trying to teach their young ones that they matter, and the difficulty in that when the education system is telling them that they don't. This trickle-down effect of displacement tells us who and what your priorities are. It's disheartening to see our children so low on this list that they didn't constitute a mention during the process or the last board meeting, not even an acknowledgement of their very existence. For some of our Head Start children, their classroom and school is the only constant in their lives right now. We have unhoused families who ride the bus from shelters or different friends and family's couches to bring their little ones to Applegate because they know it's a safe place. They have a family service worker they can trust and a community who's ready to support them. We want our children to have access to quality educational opportunities so that someday they too could have a chance at being in a tag program or going to a school like Access. Our Native children are brilliant, vibrant, and resilient, and destined to do great things if we give them the chance. I want to thank you again, superintendent and board, for your support of our Native Head Start and Early Head Start classrooms.
Good evening. My name is Sidney Roberts, R-O-B-E-R-T-S, and that's Sidney with two Y's. I am the proud parent of two students in PPS, a freshman at Madison High School and a senior at Alliance at Meek. Almost exactly two years ago, I participated in a focus group as an Alliance parent. Because the PPS Board voted to take a new building for Alliance off the bond vote, move Alliance at Benson out of Benson, and create a plan for a new Alliance, like many others, I offered my testimony about what I, as a parent, see as a necessary to meet the needs of my son and other students like him. Today, two years later, there has been little to no progress in addressing the needs of both Alliance campuses, while the middle schools and the more traditional high schools continue to be updated and/or relocated. Meanwhile, Alliance at Benson is on the verge of eviction, and Alliance at Meek lacks the space and modernization that the students are so deserving of. Many of the students at either of the campuses are already at risk, and here we are treating them as if their school is not important, not deserving of being updated, modernized, not worthy of complete school building to themselves. What message does that send to our students? When they enter Alliance, the students often find a breath of fresh air, a new beginning in their motivation and desire to be and do more academically and personally. They are not overwhelmed and overlooked due to student-teacher ratios. They feel a sense of belonging and accomplishment. Yet, the environment in which they are being taught is dark, outdated, and depressing. This impacts the students and the teachers' morale negatively. What is it going to take for PPS to realize that Alliance at Meek and Benson is just as important as Franklin, Grant, Roosevelt, Roseway Heights, Harriet Tubman, Rose City Park, Access Academy, and the many others? What about the Alliance campuses? When is it their turn? They are people. They are also our future, and they deserve an upgrade. Thank you.
So thank you, everybody, for the comments this evening, and please feel free to contact our board manager, Roseanne Powell, who's there, if there's anything specifically to follow up with the board. In addition, I know lots of people, instead of testifying, choose to email or write the board, and I know that we're getting lots of mail and reading it, so thank you for expressing your points of view and your perspective and your concerns in whatever way you're most comfortable, and we appreciate the feedback from the community. Next, I'm going to turn to the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. One of the board's primary responsibilities is to review and approve the school district's budget and oversight of its fiscal reports. Tonight, we have an annual comprehensive financial report that was recently presented to the FAO Committee, or the Finance Audit and Operations Committee, and I'm going to ask Vice Chair Moore to introduce the topic.
This is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, affectionately known as CAFER. And as the name implies, this is an annual audit of the operating budget for PPS. It also includes a special report on any federal grant funds and how we are managing them. And I'm going to allow you to go through the details. I just want to say two things. The FAO Committee has unanimously recommended that the board approve the audit and accept it. And the second thing I want to say is, this was a difficult year with a lot of changes. And TKW, which is the company that's doing the audit, has been very accommodating. We ended up having to reschedule a couple of times for various reasons, and they've worked very hard in the last couple of months to meet a December 31 deadline, to get this thing done, approved, and delivered to the state. And I want to thank you for being so accommodating. And I want to thank you for being so accommodating and for all your hard work, and also May Lee, who came in sort of in the middle of all of it. So, thank you both for all the work.
Thank you very much.
Could I just ask our Chief Financial Officer, May Lee, to introduce our support in this annual process, our outside auditor?
Of course. It's been a pleasure working with the staff from TKW, our audit firm, and Tim Gillette is the audit partner on the engagement, and we've been working with this firm for many years.
Great. Thanks, May. Hi, I am Tim Gillette from Talbot, Corvo, and Warwick, or more commonly known as TKW. Gosh, I'm not sure why everybody left when we're just getting to the good stuff here. But as Board Member Moore said --
[laughing]
-- Board Member Moore said, "I went through this all with the FAO Committee a week ago today in some detail." So, and about half of you, maybe more, were on that committee. So, I will go very quickly again, as I usually do, before the red light comes on. And if there are any questions, I'm always happy to spend more time or answer any questions, but otherwise, I will move pretty fast. It's a big document. It's a hundred-and-fifty-some pages. My parts are pretty small. Really, May and her staff have done a great job putting this all together. The independent auditors' report, my document, is page fourteen through sixteen. And to cut to the chase, it's an unmodified opinion, or the so-called clean opinion from your auditor, says, "We believe, in our opinion, the financial statements are fairly presented." It takes three pages to say that, but that's the bottom line. It goes into some detail about how much responsibility we take for which parts the report and so forth, but I'm not going to go through that unless you want to. My report's followed by the management's discussion and analysis, the MDA. It's a good overview of the financial statements. I always encourage everyone to read those, even if they don't read all a hundred-and-fifty-some pages in great detail. The statements themselves, there's not a lot of new things this year. The basis of accounting has not changed. There is no new pronouncements that change anything in the statements, which is kind of a nice thing, a little bit unusual. There was one new pronouncement that took effect this year, Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement Number Seventy-Seven, which meant you had to disclose tax abatements that affect the district. That's the only new thing this year. That's a requirement for everyone, all municipalities in the United States, nothing special for the district. But you do disclose those. If you're comparing this year's CAFFER to previous years, that's something new. I'll skip all the way to the back, page one-hundred-and-fifty-two, also our report. In accordance with Oregon State Regulations, the state of Oregon requires us to report on certain things. There's a bullet list of some of those things. There was nothing unusual on any of those things except for a small finding on reporting of teacher experience, which is an extremely difficult thing to get right. I think we find something almost every year. It's cleaned up considerably over the last few years. And that's about all I have to say about the CAFFER itself. We do also audit and report in accordance with uniform guidance on your federal grant awards and expenditures. There are a couple of reports in that document. It's a separate document. You can kind of get the good stuff just by looking at page thirteen, which is the summary of our report. It says that it's an unmodified report on internal control over financial reporting. There were some issues identified. And then on federal awards, there was an issue identified there, but it's also an unmodified report on the schedule of expenditures of federal awards, the CIFA. And that's followed by more details on the findings that we had, and also follows up on prior-year findings. And I can say that, you know, everything is currently being addressed, and there's actions in place to address those things. So, again, happy to take questions. I went pretty fast, but, again, I've been through it with the FAO Committee a week ago in more detail, so.
We had kind of excruciating detail during the committee, and you probably don't need to do that for the general audience, but could you talk briefly about what the findings were? I mean, there were a few findings. Could you talk about that a little bit?
Sure. On the financial statements, we had three findings. One had to do with essentially what we would call a cutoff issue. There was an invoice that came later in the year. It was an August invoice, but it was for work done prior to June 30th. It should have been recorded in the June 30, seventeen fiscal year, but was missed, and so was not. The amount was a couple million dollars, so it was not insignificant. We did get that corrected, so the financial statements are corrected for that. We found the, in what I'd call the top-side entries, where you get from your trial balance, your general ledger, the accounting records that the district keeps, to the entity-wide statements that are prepared for this, which is a once-a-year process. There are some things that happen just that one time a year. Used an outside contractor to do some of those calculations, in particular for Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement Number Sixty-Eight, which has to do with pensions. It's a little bit complicated. There was an error made in that calculation where the contractor picked up the wrong number from a report from PERS, and so there was an eighteen-million-dollar correction made for that. Then there were a couple of other things also in the top-side process. There were some things that were -- there was an error in the deferred interest calculation on the deferred interest bonds. Actually, it is a complicated calculation, but we picked that up. That was about six million dollars, five-point-six, maybe. And there was a classification error in the net position of, I think, thirty-two million dollars. So, those were the financial statement findings that we found. The compliance finding and the federal grant findings, if you will, was a matching issue on the Gear Up Grant. There were some calculations that weren't done quite right. There was some documentation that was missing, and a few other little things, but less so than last year. Last year, we had, I think, seven compliance findings. This year, we had one compliance finding. So, the district has done a lot of work on the Gear Up Grant. It's difficult to get that matching handled completely. I know that work continues, and May and I have had conversations about things that are going to continue on into this period and this future to clear those things up.
Director Constance, did you have some question or statement?
It is significant to not have material findings on a budget of this complexity, and also, in our FAO meeting, we did have considerable discussion around what process improvements our staff has made in response to the small findings that were brought out in this audit. So, thank you very much. It's continuous learning.
It's a large, complex organization, and there has been change in the staff and leadership, and so it's not unusual to find a few things.
Yeah, just to that point, I think we have a new superintendent and three new board members since this is the last school year's budget.
Yes.
So, I just had a question, just to go to the findings. So, while it's an unmodified -- There also was, there were material weaknesses identified, and going through here, if you got the two-point-five million, the eight million misstatements, and I'm just wondering, the thirty-five million as another one. So, are those, at the end of the year, just a wash? Or do we have thirty-five million less than we thought when we have these?
Okay, the thirty-five is just a reclassification, so it's between accounts on the financial statement. So, it doesn't, it's, I guess you could say it's a wash, but it's in different categories. It doesn't mean you have that much less money.
But the bottom line, there is not a material understatement. It's that they're reclassified in different categories. Is that --
For that particular item, yes, that's correct.
We looked through it, and it says that we have things that were --
The statements have all been corrected for these items, so what you're seeing in the statements is a fair presentation.
So, if you read it, the lady person would read it, and it said that we have an overstatement of eighteen million dollars, it's an overstatement in one category and shifting, it would be a different category. It's not that we overstated our overall financial position.
Eighteen million is different from the thirty-five. I'm sorry. The eighteen was a deferred outflow that wasn't there, so that does affect your financial position, your net position at the end of the day. So, that one does change the bottom line, if you will.
So, that's the eighteen-million-dollar?
But the eighteen million was put there in error, so it, and like I say, it's a top-side entry. It's an entry made after the fact. It's not in your actual books and records. It's in getting from the books and records to the final year-end financial report. So, the fact that it was done incorrectly doesn't change the reality at all, or even the numbers you've been seeing during the year.
Okay. Great. Thanks.
I just wanted to point out that we had discovered, the staff had discovered the Gear Up discrepancy, I think, prior to the audit beginning. So, that was reflected in the first budget amendment that we passed in --
In September.
So, I think, I think going forward, that issue has been addressed, and we're not going to see that kind of discrepancy in future. So, I'm glad to see that it was, you know, taken care of.
Any other questions, comments? Mr. Anthony? Anything?
No.
Great. Thank you.
Great.
I think it's worth noting one thing. I asked a lot of questions about this because I misunderstood it when I read it. So, if I remember correctly, because of our PERS site account, right? We have spent twenty-million, twenty-something-plus-million dollars less than we would have otherwise. Correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, this is one that we, we have previous boards to thank for the foresight in starting those accounts, what, fifteen years ago? Something like that?
Yeah, and Jim Scherzinger in particular.
And Jim Scherzinger.
Heidi Franklin.
Yep.
Any other discussion? The Board will now consider Resolution Number 5551, acceptance and approval of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, reports to management, and report on requirements of the Single Audit Act, and OMB Circular A133. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Director Anthony moves, and Director Constance seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 5551. Ms. Houston, is there any comment on this resolution? Is there any further board discussion? The Board will now vote on Resolution 5551. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Student representative?
Yes.
Resolution 5551 is approved by a vote of seven to zero, with student representative Tran voting yes. Thank you both for your work and the diligence that you've brought to this task. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Six to zero for the minute.
Oh, I'm sorry. Records stand corrected. We're also squished in here. It seems like we're the same number. So, Kellogg Middle School Master Plan. So, last May, our community strongly supported the passage of a capo bond to make critical health and safety improvements, and rebuild three high schools and one new middle school in southeast Portland to replace Kellogg Middle School, which was closed in the mid-two thousands. As a resident of southeast Portland, I'm excited. Tonight, they'll be considering the Kellogg Master Plan, and this is another step forward to the district's efforts to provide a more equitable middle school experience. Currently, students in this part of southeast don't have access to a full middle school experience. So, tonight's kind of kicks off the formal part of the Board's work, and I'm going to ask Director Moore to tell us what happened in the FAO Committee and what the recommendation is.
So, the FAO Committee got a very comprehensive presentation on the Kellogg Master Plan, and we approved it. We had a lot of discussion, and I think Superintendent Guerrero is going to introduce the staff members to come talk to us.
Yeah, well, we have a lot of important facilities-related items tonight, and I trust that our COO, Jerry Vincent, could speak all night about this, but we want to mix it up. So, we're going to invite a few of our senior staff, who are closely connected to this work, to come up. We have Dan Jung, Senior Director of School Modernization, and Steve Effro, Senior Project Manager, who are going to provide this portion of tonight's reporting.
We might add one more person, Deb France, who's with O Planning and Design, who's the lead architect on the project.
The more the merrier.
Okay. Do you'd like to walk through just in general the process?
Thanks for the invite, and then we'll lead in.
Yes.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. I'm Deb France with O Planning and Design. We've gone through several months of master planning Kellogg Middle School with numerous stakeholder participation, including groups within PPS such as facilities, security, safety, food services. It's a long list. We have a design advisory group that we've met with now five times, and they've provided great input, and we've met with the TOSs and the Office of Teaching and Learning. The outcome of that is that we have a master plan that you've reviewed, and that is a one-hundred-thousand-square-foot building. Actually, it's one-hundred-thousand-four-hundred. We are looking at some budget challenges. We've identified those, and we've set some targets to try to align the budget as we move into the design process. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I think maybe worthwhile pointing out is, you see the materials that went to the FAO last week, and it's roughly five-hundred pages, so I'm sure it's difficult to absorb all that information. But the meat and the potatoes there is the, what we call, the area program. So, the Board, the district, has an educational specification for middle schools. That has been approved. That is one of our fundamental documents that we start with and we aim towards. And so, we're here tonight. We have a document that shows what those requirements are and how the master plan meets those requirements. So, effectively, that's what's being approved, and that's what we're going to move forward with through design.
Any questions? Well, since I'm not on the committee, so this is my one chance to ask questions. Really appreciate all the information. I think it gives a sense of what a comprehensive middle school with equitable offerings is going to look like in outer southeast. I had just two places where I just had questions that I'm sure you have answers to. One, it looks like there was some value engineering already to look at some cost-control opportunities, and one of the things being potentially removed is a computer lab. And is that, is there more than one, or is it, is it being removed because the concept is every classroom has, got it embedded in the classroom?
That's indeed the logic here, is that the computer labs were dedicated when we didn't have devices in every classroom. The middle school of the future, and I'd like to remind us that this is a building that will be opening in 2021, will have devices in every classroom. The idea of a dedicated computer lab that would be used even for testing at this point in time is not supported by the TOSs or other members of the committee.
And then my other question is, if it's being built for six-hundred-and-seventy-five students, and now that we have middle school, after-school sports for all of our middle school students, just from a Title IX standpoint, I know when my kids were in a one gym or one court middle school, that really, there was, it turned out there was inequitable opportunities for kids to use the courts. Are these built as if sort of in the post-Title IX? It's been in existence for forty-something years, or thirty, forty years. Are these built as if sort of in the post-Title IX, it's been in existence for forty-something years, or thirty, forty years, that you'd have enough time that, or, and space that you could have both boys and girls and multiple levels of teams using it?
We have looked at the scheduling of the gym, it's divided into two sections with a possible curtain, so two classes could be participating at the same time. The gym actually is serving as a classroom, there's even media support in the gymnasium for that function. We have a dance space, which can serve as an ancillary space, and we have an outside covered play area. So the, the long answer to your question is that we do believe with the input from O T L that the physical fitness needs and Title IX needs have been met.
I'd like to follow up on that. The building's being designed for six seventy-five with an optional overflow capacity to eight-ten. Now, by my count, that's going to put, at, at the smaller number, P E classes at forty-eight students apiece, and at the higher, fifty-eight students apiece. I like children very, very much, but that is an awful lot of twelve-to-fourteen-year-olds. Have we looked at our actual ability to conduct adequate P E programming at that kind of enrollment?
Just to talk on the, the space numbers, I might kind of look through the documents, but what are we using for calculations for students per classroom?
The students per classroom is a baseline of thirty, the classrooms are sized to ramp up to thirty-six, but our baseline is thirty.
Correct, so I'm just, I'm not sure if I'm following the numbers.
You've got six seventy-five, the theoretically, the state requirement is that we offer P E every day, to every child. So two classes at the same time in the one gym, that gives you at six seventy-five, forty-eight students a pop.
I see, okay.
Or fifty-eight a pop.
I was just going to add that I think the assumption in the educational specifications is that the covered play area is a third space. So the idea is that you can actually have three sections running concurrently.
As well as for the local education credit and the dance.
And the dance as well.
That's right.
The other question I have, it, it's similar, but a little more complicated. I see you want to take the cafeteria size down, so that you'd be offering a three, three-period lunch instead of a two-period lunch.
I'd like to correct that.
Oh, thank you.
Actually, we have done the reverse. The cafeteria size as part of our proposed master plan is much lighter, larger than the ed specs, so that we can go from a three- or four-period lunch to a two-period lunch.
Oh, that's good news, because that's really been a big issue.
Yeah.
I'm very happy to hear that. I do want to ask, again, I know you're planning on six seventy-five, what does that do to lunchroom capacity if it goes up to eight-ten?
It actually does work out at eight-ten with the size of the cafeteria in the document that you have in front of you.
Thank you, I'm very happy to hear that, that's excellent.
Is that an ed spec that needs to change?
That's a good question, I mean, there's been some conversations with the, the middle school ed spec is being updated right now. Our, our team is not in charge of updating that, but we've been involved in that process, so that's something that we can follow up on, and see if that is something that's anticipated to change.
And we did have some good conversation in our F A O meeting about the dialogue between the ed spec development process for the middle schools with our work on our middle school curriculum framework as part of the opening of the other two middle schools, to make sure that both, both processes are talking to one another, and making sure that the, our ed specs informing the Kellogg design process are reflective of the best practices that are coming forward through the middle school framework work.
Can I ask about the updating of the ed specs? Do, do we have an E T A on that, do you, do you know?
I don't know offhand the stats, but I don't know if you guys do, if you're working more directly with them. The, our real estate office is, is managing that process, I know they're actively working on it, like I said, the team's been working hand-in-hand, but I'd have to follow up on that schedule.
Okay.
And they're, I was just going to say, they, we're keep, keeping them in the loop on our process specific to Kellogg, so that they're engaged with us, I think, I don't know if they're officially updating it as we go, but I think the understanding is, they want to track what we do throughout the design process, so that they can get the latest and best information for Kellogg, because the intent is that it's kind of a more universal middle school space, so that its program should be reflective of what a middle school should be.
So using this example with the cafeteria, since directors are bringing it up, when you look at the ed specs for cafeteria, it's four thousand two hundred fifty square feet in the middle school specs, when you look at Kellogg's plan, page thirty-two, it's at over six thousand, so the two adds have definitely contributed another eighteen hundred square feet to that cafeteria, so it should, should accommodate the need.
And I, at the committee meeting, the, the point was made that this design process is, is, is being much, much more closely coordinated with the, with the academic side of the house than previous designs have done. So I think that's a real, that's a real strength of this design in particular, and, and I think it's, it's sort of showing the way to how these things should be going in the future as well. So that's very good, thank you.
So just a last note, that this design is shooting for a lead silver in terms of sustainability, so sustainability for the school itself as well, lead gold, oh, sorry, yeah. Oh, I, I was thinking second, but I forgot about platinum. But, so pertinent to the, the building itself, but also the construction process and the materials, and recycling and all that, so that's great, that's where we want to be.
So just one last question, back to the no computer labs, because it's all embedded, is that, is it an all wireless system?
There's wireless, but there's also, there's data, hardwired data in every space, yeah, so we're not relying heavily on one or the other.
Okay. And then, just to Director Constance' point about the sustainability, I noticed that there is a large amount of salvage that's going to happen.
That's correct, yeah.
Next, next steps, more D A G meetings, and then you'll come back for a presentation with a design?
Yeah.
Great. Any other board questions before we get to the resolution?
Just, one, one of the challenges we face, and I bring this up because it's part of our bigger picture thing, is that because we don't have feeder schools determined, because we don't have the whole east side plan, when we were talking about ideal places to put bike racks, because we're not sure exactly where kids are going to be biking in from, and there's, there's pieces like that that are, you know, well, the D A G has, I think, been helpful around that, but without that certainty, it, it's a little wrinkle there. One of the other things we've talked about that have come up in our facilities is the location of the intensive skills classroom, and that balance of having easy access to getting kids in and out, and, and having a room that has access directly out of the building with, integrated into the life of the building as well, and I think we're in a pretty good place there. But on the education side, I don't think we have a best practice of, what exactly do we do? How do we design school life so that there's, it's more than having where a classroom is located, it's, it's integrating community with those kids, and I think that's, that's a piece that we can move forward, because if we had that piece, then the, then the location would tend to kind of drop out more than.
Can you talk about that, because we did talk about it in the committee, and, and I think you're going to like the answer.
So the intensive skills classroom is right at the connection point between the two four-story classroom wings, and then the, the two-story gymnasium and commons wings. They all connect, and that's where the integrated skills classroom is, intensive skills. It does have outside access, it has direct access to the commons, it has direct access to the, the STEM lab, and the art classroom, and the music space, so it's really a central location. They have their own restroom right there, and then on the floor above, we have the Resource Learning Center, and it's in the same exact spot, so they have a relationship in the building right at the anchor point.
Director Rosen and I have been going to the D A G meetings, and they've been really, really constructive, great community input and feedback, which has really helped, helped things along. And yet, the location, I think, does, does, does well, but it's also how educators make it work, so that it's, oh, well, the classroom is right next to it, and are there relationships built up between kids across the whole spectrum, so that, that's more the, the point I'm getting at there, but, yeah.
Well, certainly we want the building, the facility to support, you know, what a thriving school community looks like, you know, and that, that's an important part of the, the process. And to answer the bike question, I believe there are three different locations where bike parking is scheduled to be, including some covered bike parking, so there is some thought going into, you know, spreading that out.
So, question for the Enrollment and Transfer Committee Chair. So if we're not sure what the patterns will be, what communities do we, are we engaging that know that they're going to be there? Or is it? Do you get what my question is? If, if we're not sure who's going, going to be in the building, how, how do we know in advance which communities we're, we're supposed to be engaging on the design?
So I think you've kind of taken a general southeast. Clearly, we've got some K eights that are, that are close by, so we can make some pretty educated guesses in terms of Chris and our lead and Mary as well, all being leading candidates.
Engagement from staff and families from all those schools?
We've reached out to all those communities to be a part of the D A G process, including the senior director, who is over that entire area, to, again, not knowing, but to try to get a mix from everybody, and accepting everyone who expressed interest in being a part of the committee.
Yeah, and, and it's nice to see there's a middle, middle grade, middle, former middle school teacher at the old Kellogg, who is on the committee, and it's nice to have that kind of continuity and input.
Is the board ready to consider resolution fifty-five-fifty-two? If so, the board will now consider the resolution authorizing Kellogg Middle School for replacement master plan as part of the 2017 capital bond program, do I have a motion?
Second.
Director Anthony moves, and Director Bailey seconds, resolution five-five-five-two. Is there any public comment, Ms. Houston?
We have one, Steve, Steve Buell.
Go ahead and take your seat, we'll, we may call you back.
It's very exciting.
But you may come back, but we'll take public comment first.
Good evening, board members, superintendent, my name is Steve Buell, B U E L, and I'm here to follow up on what Paul was talking about on the P E. This building that you're building is a hundred years, that's how long it's supposed to last. The P E aspect, I got interested because they said it was going to be twenty feet from Powell, but it's not, it's twenty feet from the, from the border of the property line, and so it's actually forty feet from Powell, so I kind of lost interest in that, and started asking some questions about the gentleman who was helping me, who was doing a very good job, and he said, I started asking him about the P E. Your P E is not workable. You have, Paul's absolutely correct, if you use the two halves of the gym, you come out with about forty-six, forty-eight, forty-seven kids, if it all broke down perfect. That means you might have fifty-five, and you might have forty-two, but those are not numbers you can do. And when you, when you ask about, okay, where are the other areas of P E? One of them that they talk about is outdoors. Now, when I asked about that, they said, well, go over and look at the nice things that we have at Fabian's. On my way over here today, I did, I went over and looked at Fabian's outdoors, totally, no one could teach P E in the middle of the winter out there, it just does not work. And if we're, if we're going to meet the state standards, which we've talked and talked in this district about how we don't meet the state standards over and over again, but we're going to build a building that's going to last a hundred years, that isn't going to give every kid in middle school a physical education, regular, daily physical education, which is the state standard, it's two hundred and twenty-five minutes, forty-five minutes a day, and so that doesn't make any sense to me, and the obvious thing that you do is that you put in an auxiliary gymnasium with a little bit of seating, because, and that does more than just correct the P E problem, which is a, which is, is, nobody would teach P E outside in the middle of yesterday. How would you like to have been, I went over and looked at those, if they had the, the covered area, it's all wet. The wind blows in, the rain blows in, you're teaching P E out, oh, yeah, that'll, that'll, that's really a great P E. And so we made some mistakes at Roosevelt early on, because the board didn't get involved enough in looking at some things. We made a couple pretty big mistakes, but let's not do that with Kellogg, let's put in that gym. Not only will it fix all the P E, but it will also give that community in southeast, and we all know how southeast, you go far out southeast, I taught out there. They don't have a lot of areas where people can actually have good recreation things, so they can use that gym out there too, make sure there's a little bit of seating, and, and then it'll work. What you have now is not excellence, it's getting by, I guess, maybe, but not if you're a P E teacher, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there any board discussion?
Well, let me, full open clarify then, you all said, there's a dance space that can satisfy a P E credit, and you can, thirty kids can fit in there, and if it's a dance space, it could also be used for other purposes as well. You could probably do some tumbling in there, or something like that, some kind of gymnastic stuff, you could probably do yoga in there, for example. So we've actually got two halves of a gym plus a third, so that gets us closer to, from forty-eight down to thirty-two, if I'm doing the math right.
So what I, what I'm, what I'm going to ask is, I'm assuming we're going to move ahead and vote on this tonight, but I would ask the F A O committee to go back and look at that issue. I do think the issue is, you know, here we have an opportunity to actually build a building that will allow us to comply with state law, that we should just make sure it works before we move ahead with the building.
I appreciate former Director Buell bringing up the point.
So as chair, the F A O, can I make a request of the D A G? Can you guys look at this, and, and then come back to the committee?
Yeah, I, I think what we can do is take a look at what, what exactly the standards are, and then we can come back and explain exactly how the proposed plan would meet those standards.
Okay. Because I, I think it would be, I think it would be better for the design group to, to be working on this rather than the committee.
So the only thing I would say is, I want to make sure it gets addressed, I don't want the proposal coming back, and we have the same.
Yes, yes, I'll, I'll put it on the calendar, and we will, we will nag you if we don't hear from you.
We won't forget.
I would just offer similarly, if the ed specs outlined for middle school is a sixty-eight-hundred-square-foot gym, we would want to know what that might look like if we were to set up a hypothetical schedule to, to provide for P E activity, taking into account dance or outside spaces during certain portions of the school year when we think it might realistically. certain portions of the school year when we think it might realistically be used, but it might be helpful to see a sample schedule of how that space would be maximized.
Director Anthony?
And just one other request, as long as we're making them here. On the cafeteria, I really appreciate the news about the size, which is wonderful. As you're looking at design, I hope you'll also be looking at how you can actually get 400 students through in time to be able to eat. Excellent. Thank you.
Great. The board will now vote on Resolution 5552. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Student Representative Tran?
Yes.
Thank you. No abstentions. Resolution 5552 is approved by a vote of six to zero with Student Representative Tran voting yes. Thank you for your work and we look forward to you coming back. All right, so just to continue on our schools' facility evening, next we have, the board's going to recess from its regular meeting and continue as the local contract review board. As earlier referenced, the voters approved the bond in May and authorized the rebuild of three high schools, one of them being Madison High School. As we work, as we prepare work for the, for the work at Madison, the first of three high school rebuilds for this 2017 bond, we need to consider an exemption from public contracting requirements. Oregon law authorizes the board to exempt certain public improvement contracts from the traditional design, build, bid, competitive procurement process. Staff requests that the Board of Education, acting now as the contract review board, approve an exemption for the Madison High School modernization project. Staff submitted an extensive report for the board with its findings and recommendations and presented that to the Finance Audit and Operations Committee. Director Moore, would you please introduce the item and tell us the recommendation from the committee?
The FAO Committee got a presentation on this about, I want to say, three weeks ago, and the committee unanimously recommended to the full board approval of the resolution. And Superintendent Guerrero, do you want to invite people to?
Yes, we're going to have Emily Courtenge, our Director of Purchasing and Contracting, to come up and give a high-level understanding of why we're seeking the alternative contracting process for Madison Modernization Project.
Good evening. So many of you know that our public contracting rules require for public improvement contracts, a standard design, bid, build process, where design is completed fully, and then we put the work out for bid and it's bid on a, solely a low bid process. That isn't a very workable option for these very large, very complex projects, so we are asking for an exemption to go forward with a CMGC, which stands for Construction Manager, General Contractor, excuse me, process. What we do there is we do an RFP, so Request for Proposals, that's fully competitive, where we evaluate not just price, but experience and expertise and compliance with our equity goals. And we, so we have a valuation committee and proceed as normal with our RFPs. Then we award the contract and the, early in the design phase, so the contractor then works very closely with the designer, and that, you know, allows for value engineering, it allows for ensuring that our design is buildable and makes sense, it allows for cost savings and many other benefits.
So, every, every school bond project, every major rebuild or new construction has had one of these exemptions, correct?
So, right, for Grant, for Franklin, and for Roosevelt. Yes, this is exactly how we proceeded.
Okay. So this is sort of standard operating procedure for a project of this size and scope?
Of this size and this complexity, particularly it makes sense for modernizations.
So just to build off of that, I think it's worth getting in the public record, because I think when, when people hear that there's going to be an exemption from the public contracting process, just to be clear, that it's, this is going to be a fully competitive RFP process, correct?
Absolutely. Right.
So while it's an exemption, we still are going to have a competitive process.
Right. It's simply an exemption from a pure low bid process, where we don't get to look at experience, expertise, compliance with equity goals, and absolutely fully competitive.
And in addition to those, we're also able to look at the quality of the work and the kinds of materials that are going to be used in evaluating the bids, right?
And whether they can perform.
So, at the point that they're proposing, there's, there's no completed design. They're proposing early in the design period. So what we're looking at is their past experience, we're checking references on prior projects, and they're, yes, everything that would suggest that their contractor is able to take on a project of this scope.
And Emily, or maybe this is a question for Jerry. What is your sense of how having a CMGC contract affects the bid climate, the number of potential bidders?
I'll have Dan answer that.
Sure, great question. I think, you know, the, with the materials you have, it talks about the benefits of CMGC for scope, for schedule, for budget, for a lot of different things. Probably the number one benefit in this particular case, specific to competition for general contractors, is this type of work, you don't see traditional hard bid work. It's very possible if we attempted to hard bid this, we would get no bidders.
I think that's a really salient point.
That, that's in a company's portfolio. As far as subcontractors, by having a general contractor onboard early, they're able to do a lot of outreach early on in the process, so we can maximize our competition.
We also encourage in our RFP contractors to propose as partners, and that worked well in the Grant CMGC process, where we ended up with Anderson Colas.
And, and that's a good example. We also find it to be much better opportunity for minority-owned small business partnerships to be able to form that relationship with the GC.
Right. So I'm just going to draft behind that point. So, by the way, this staff report, I thought, is excellent, laid out really clear. The question I had about the alignment with the equity policy, that one of the things the staff report says, the benefit of this, using this method, is that enhances the district's ability to include evaluation criteria in the RFP to ensure selection of prime contractor with strong commitment to use and demonstrate success in using certified minority-owned women-owned service-disabled veterans and emerging small businesses. I'm wondering if we use, what sort of success or what sort of track record do we find with the projects that have already been completed with Grant, Franklin, and Roosevelt? Did we find art contractors who actually came into the RFP process with a track record of that? Did they, have they actually, did they actually follow through, or what sort of data have we seen?
Right, so the procurement of the Franklin and Roosevelt contractors predated me and was very early on in the implementation of our equity policy. If I had my computer in front of you, I could pull out their exact utilization numbers and how many, what percentage of the dollars on those projects went to certified firms, but I believe we met our 18% goal on the Roosevelt project. We did not on Franklin, and then, of course, Grant is still early in construction, but we are hoping that we do.
I was just going to say, Grant looks like, I mean, early on, we think we're going to be able to exceed the 18%. The reason that Roosevelt largely was able to exceed that is because we use an RFP process for subcontractors as well, which we're allowed to do with a CMGC that we can't with hard bid. So we're able to do a similar process where we can evaluate with additional criteria for the prime, we can also do it for the subcontractor. So that is really what got us there.
And the experience of Franklin was, received a lot of attention in our lessons learned process in terms of our contracting procedures, because I think the reason that we didn't meet it there is because there was a anticipated dependence on one larger minority-owned subcontractor that ended up not panning out as a partnership for the general contractor, and so you didn't have then the underpinnings beneath that of a number of minority-owned businesses doing different subcontracting work. So we did make some changes, right, in our, in our process to make sure that that kind of thing doesn't happen again.
Yeah, we, we're always looking to improve, or continually improving, all of our processes, including in this area. And in that particular case, yeah, there was actually two contracts that they had anticipated and anticipated getting and worked towards, but ultimately neither of them worked out, so it was an unfortunate situation.
So these are just aspirational goals that get set?
The 18% is an aspirational goal. So we asked them to propose, how do you plan on meeting that? And then we basically hold them to the actions of what they, what they said they would do. We make sure that they do those actions, and in some situations, it ultimately didn't get us to the 18%.
So there's no penalty for not meeting the 18%? Is there, is there something, just from a lessons learned, that we would do differently?
There's no penalty, per se, and it's a good question. We have done a lot of things differently. Again, we've, we've improved in the way that we evaluate when someone comes and proposes. We try to be much more clever in how we evaluate that and sure that we're confident that they can, they can provide what they're saying that they can do, but we don't have a mechanism to say if you don't meet that exact percentage, then there is a penalty in place.
But it is also a really important metric for the bond accountability committees, that they're on a quarterly basis routinely reviewing, and so if a project is, is not meeting that benchmark, you know, there are continually new subcontracting opportunities and they can turn the heat up.
And we had a meeting with the BAC last week to do exactly that, to talk about one specific project about this specific topic.
Any other questions?
I think my memory is that that 18% is much higher than typical for local governments in the area.
It varies. Some govern, some local agencies set their goal by contract, so to sort of address what's available in a particular scope of work. That 18% goal is a board policy goal that was set when our policy was initiated back in 2012, I believe.
That's right.
Right? So, it's, it's a little higher than some, but it's not out of range. I know that other agencies struggle to reach it.
Ms. Houston, if there's no other questions or comments from the board, Ms. Houston, do we have anybody signed up for public comment?
We do not.
So I'm now going to close, thank, thank you. I'm now going to close the public hearing on the CMGC exemption and ask the board to consider Resolution Number 5553, Madison High School Modernization Project's exemption from competitive bidding and authorization for use of the Construction Manager, General Contractor, alternative contract method. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Director Anthony moves and Director Bailey seconds. The motion to adopt Resolution 5553. Is there any further board discussion on this item? The board will now vote on Resolution 5553. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Student Representative Tran?
Yes.
Resolution 5553 is approved by a vote by six to zero with Student Representative Tran voting yes. The board will now convene back, reconvene back into its, to its regular board meeting, but we are going to continue on the topic of facilities. Our final facilities agenda item tonight relates to our middle school openings and the comprehensive environmental assessment at Harriet Tubman, and I'm going to ask the FAO Committee Chair Moore to, again, introduce this item.
So we're getting, so in case you haven't noticed, the FAO Committee is the place to be.
I'm feeling left out.
That depends on how you look at things.
Yeah, well, trust me. And we're getting regular updates on the, on the Tubman project, and in particular on the environmental issues and mitigation strategies. And we, we are, we have been meeting roughly every two weeks. So we met last week, two weeks, last week. Okay, the weeks are going by very fast. And we got an, we got an update. This is a very, very fast-moving process with lots of moving parts. So I anticipate that we're going to get new news tonight, and Superintendent Guerrero, can you invite people up?
I, I would invite Dr. John Burnham to make his way down here and a supporting role, Jerry Vincent. But I just want to underline what Director Moore has brought up. This is obviously a very important project to us. There's, we share a lot of concerns from the community around Tubman Middle, and it's moving both in accelerated fashion and the work and the discovery and the updates are happening in real time. So tonight's another opportunity to hear the latest. Looks like this is going to be a team effort.
We have a, we have a PowerPoint, if they can start that up from the back, and I'm told that the remote for it is with the chair. Good evening. As Director Moore said, we are moving fast. So tonight, the goal for tonight was to bring a consultant forward to help us put a draft action plan together to have it discussed. We're not voting on anything tonight. It, the goal that was tasked of the consultant was to have it all-inclusive of all 14 items that the board put in the resolution that they would like to have studied. What I'd like to do is invite Sonoma to come on up. John, I'll move to the outside. They're the ones who are going to be presenting. They're the ones you're going to have 95% of your questions to. So I'd like them to come up, please, and we will get right into the criteria.
Hi, I'm Hillary Hafner with Sonoma Technology. I'm born and raised in McMinnville and went to Oregon State, so it's lovely to be here. See you.
And I'm Paul Roberts from Sonoma Technology. And I'll be giving the first parts of the presentation, if I can understand. So this is to address the air, air quality component of the comprehensive health study that the board asked for and at, at Tubman School. And really, that, that addresses kind of three or four things. What is the current air quality? What pollutants are of concern? And you had a long list of, of those to consider, and we'll talk about that in a little bit. We have experience with school HVAC systems and measuring efficiency of them and removing some of the pollutants that are most important here, and so we'll make some recommendations to the contractor that's selected to do the HVAC design based on two studies we've done in Las Vegas and Salt Lake. And then there are various other mitigation measures that should be considered and will help provide some guidance and input on that. You know, it's especially important after the mitigation measures are done to evaluate the effectiveness of those mitigation measures, especially the filtration systems in the, for the classrooms. And that would happen when the kids show up, the students show up in August and September. There's also a component of educating stakeholders and teachers and students about air, air quality, air pollution, near roadway pollution, and we have a component to look at that that could be considered by the board. There was also discussion about coming back two years later and evaluating whether the systems are still working correctly. So that could be on the board's list as well. So the kind of approach that then could be done really involves four different steps. One is looking at what's going on right now near roadway, near, near I-5. That's mainly outdoors, the indoors can't really evaluate it now, the students aren't there, and the HVAC system is not adequate to, to protect them, and we might as well not spend the time doing that. And Phase Two could be the evaluation of the mitigation measures, especially the indoor-outdoor filtration systems. A Phase Three could involve stakeholder and student-teacher outreach. We'll talk about that in a few moments, and then the follow-up indoor. We'll talk about that in a few moments and then the follow-up indoor-outdoor study that might occur a couple of years later, just to make sure it's still working properly. So we'll go into a few details on the couple of phases that, how things might be addressed. There've been EPA and state measurements made here. There's also emissions inventory of nearby sources besides the roadway and some measurements near roadways in other places, in, in Portland and other places. So we need to evaluate those things and use those to guide the study that would be done. And then to do the comprehensive outdoor measurement, you would mainly do that during school hours. There's no reason to be monitoring overnight if we're really trying to evaluate what the effects are would be on students. EPA in various states have established criteria for health effects for these various pollutants. We'll talk a little bit more about a couple of those that are a little more difficult, but in general, those criteria are set to, at, at levels where there may be effects on students or adults. And you would take measurements and then compare them to those. So there are national ambient air quality standards for some pollutants and then there are toxic levels of concern for others. And in the phase one, then you would use the data you collect to evaluate and see which ones are most important, which ones have the highest potential toxic effect relative to these criteria. As I said, we've done work with designing and modifying filtration systems in five schools in Las Vegas and five schools in Salt Lake City. That's useful information to give to the evaluators, the designers of the new system at Tubman. And there's a lot of literature and practice on other mitigation methods, sound walls, vegetation, how effective they are and what you can do for outdoor protection as well as indoor protection. You know, one thing that's important to do in making measurements like this is make sure you do good quality assurance. This has to do with calibrating your instruments, doing duplicates, sighting instruments properly, things like that. EPA in the states have guidance on how to do that and that's really important so that when a scientist comes back and tells you what the results are, there's some confidence in the quality of that data. So we always do those kinds of things. Those are very important. Most of the modern instruments can be run fairly autonomously remotely, but you still need local technol- techs, technicians to come visit the sites occasionally. Those are kinds of things that, we're from California, but we typically hired local, local employees to, to do some of that operation and train them to do that. So that's something we would, we would propose here if we were to select it. Let's talk about the species for a second. So the, the board talked about a long list of species that were used in the EPA two thousand nine study and others that involve volatile organic carbon compounds. Those are things like benzene, toluene, formaldehyde, acetaldehyde, et cetera. And metals, other toxic chemicals. So those should be on the list if you want to evaluate all those. Okay? Now, we know a fair amount, the community knows a fair amount about the levels of most of these compounds and how important they are next to near roadways. So if you want to be comprehensive and make sure that none of those are affected, we should do some measurements of those at this site. However, there's a number that are really, should, should be the real focus and we expect them to be the focus even if you do this comprehensive evaluation at the beginning. The criteria pollutants are the ones that EPA has established national ambient air quality standards for. There's an NO2 near roadway standard, for example, but none of the sites in the whole country, including the one in Portland, right next to I five, further south, exceed those standards. The one in Portland's quite low. And, and in addition, special studies have been done, research studies have been done in Portland on NO2, for example, that all show that's below standard. So some of these could be eliminated or done in a more simpler way because you have some information about how important they are. On the other side of things, many urban areas, and in particular, there's been good analysis in Salt Lake and, and Los Angeles on what is the contribution of a range of air toxics to the total toxicity of the air in, in a general urban area. I'm not talking about near roadway right this second, just general urban area. And in general, in Los Angeles, all areas in Los Angeles and in Salt Lake City, diesel particulate matter is about eighty percent of the air toxic contribution. So it's obviously very, very important. And you can look at I five next to Tubman where it is and, you know, something like fifteen to twenty percent of the vehicles are trucks. And these are, in general, not all latest standard controlled trucks. So that's, that's the, likely the highest priority pollutant here to be concerned about. For the last ten or so years, ten or fifteen years, ultrafine particles have become a big concern as well. Oh, let me back up a brief, a brief moment on, on diesel particulate matter. EPA has not established a standard method to measure diesel particulate matter or even properly define it in the chemical terms that the criteria pollutants have been defined. In general, we use black carbon as a surrogate for diesel particulate matter. That's like collecting the material on a filter and looking at how black it is. Do it with a scientific instrument, obviously, but... So in addition, EPA has not actually set a criteria health standard for, for black carbon or diesel particulate matter. State of California has, that's one microgram per cubic meter. Other states have not done that as of now. However, most people use the California standard criteria as the measuring level for levels of concern for diesel particulate matter. Ultrafines are the particles much, much smaller. They're sort of particle matter smaller than ten microns, that's PM ten, smaller than two point five microns, that's PM two and a half. And then ultra, and, and in general, to, the PM two and a half is considered the respiratory fraction, the part that you breathe in. In general, the particles larger than PM two and a half are removed in your nose or fall out because they're large just in the atmosphere in general because of their weight and size. Ultrafine particles are in general defined as smaller than point one microns. Okay? They're included in PM ten or PM two and a half in the mass, but they contribute very little to the mass of particles. However, the number of particles in ultrafines are quite large. Ten thousand, two, you know, two thou- sorry. Ten thousand particles per cubic centimeter, for example. They contribute very little to mass, but they contribute to visibility reduction potentially, but potentially health effects. EPA, the Health Effects Institute and other bodies have looked at the literature, the health literature for ultrafines and find that there isn't yet enough evidence to say how damaging they are to our health, but they're concerned. So this is a level of concern. This is a measurement that you should be making. There may be a health standard in the future, but people are very concerned about these. These are such small particles that they can be captured in your lung and potentially transferred to your bloodstream. They're that small. So those are the two most focused materials that are probably of concern here. PM two and a half would also be one that would surely be measured here. Polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons are mixed up in all this. They can be part of diesel particulate matter. They can be attached to the large surface area of diesel particulate matter. And diesel particulate matter is also small, too. So some of the things that are measured as ultrafines are actually from diesels. So these are overlapping definitions. Okay? And wood smoke tracer might be on the list because if you're trying to understand, is all of this pollution that you might measure at a near roadway site from the roadway or from other sources? So if people are doing wood burning in their homes, for example, that is contributing to wood smoke and to black or brown carbon, it's normally called, but it's still an absorbing material similar to black carbon, similar to diesel particulate matter. In general, that might be mostly at night when the school's not open and might be lower priority because of that. Kinds of locations in phase one were not, you wouldn't be proposing measuring indoors yet, but the students will be on the playground ultimately. And that's the park just north of the school. That's a good place to monitor the near road pollution now, understand what that contribution is, use that as a measure for later when you do some mitigation to see if trees, sound walls, or whatever kinds of other mitigation measures outdoors can reduce that pollution. So somewhere on that field, probably on the west side, closer to the roadway, but not under the trees, that's a bad place to, to monitor. Obviously, that's going to be, have to be coordinated with parks and rec. You should also consider doing some measurements on the roof of the building where the air inlet's going to be. And another part of something you might consider is the EPA has done wind tunnel measurements, small scale models of near roadway pollution, different, different configurations of the roadway with an elevated roadway, a sunken roadway, in this case, one side elevated, one side sunken. And it would be good to try to get them to do some wind tunnel modeling and, and detailed flow modeling to understand the flow up that slope, over the building. Where is it coming down? Where is the highest concentrations of pollutants from that roadway? When in general, the winds are from the northwest across the roadway towards, towards the school. So you might do some measurements in this pre-study to understand if that's a hotspot or not from, from measurements. On the left is a picture of a trailer if you're going to do the comprehensive kind of monitoring that you've asked for. That involves quite a few instruments. You're going to have to have an instrument rack and air conditions shelter and things like that. If you were in the, the picture on the right shows some of those instruments in a rack, controlled space, inlets coming off the roof, et cetera. It also shows a, on the left, a meological tower to understand the wind flow at the time you're making the measurements. That's very important to make sure you understand if it's coming from the roadway or from somewhere else at that time. If the pollutant lists were reduced, you could probably get away with a smaller shelter than this. So that might, that might be an attractive thing to do. We won't go over the detailed list of, of the way to measure all these pollutants, but you know, we would recommend focusing on the, the ultrafine particles and the black carbon as a surrogate for diesel particulate matter. PM two and a half is a standard measurement. Some of them are continuous, some of them are integrated samples that have to be collected on filters and sent to the lab. There is a continuous measure, instrument to measure metals. Company here in Portland does that, Cooper, Cooper Environmental. So those are the kinds of instruments and you can look over that list and we could talk more about any of that if you want. It's important to understand the quality of the data. You don't just collect it and throw it out there. You quality control that. You compare the calibrations you made of the flow rates or the instruments in detail and then look at graphics and, and statistics of that data. And then you should compare those with the existing standards or criteria that the agencies have set up. As we said, the black carbon would be compared to the California criteria that they've set up. And there would be a report and a summary of all this. Now, one thing, this project is on a very fast track. Things are going on in parallel. The HVAC design team has to be doing their design while the measurements are being taken. So they're likely, it would likely be good to have a preliminary assessment of the data after a few weeks to make sure there's nothing unusual that should be fed back to the other design teams like the HVAC. So you don't later say, well, if you'd told me that earlier, I would have done something different. So I think that's important, too. That might be an informal kind of, kind of transfer of information, not a formal report. And of course, the PPS would put these reports on the web for, for the public to see and be presented to you as a, as a board as well. Phase two would, would be focused on when the, the building mitigation measures are done and the students are back in class. And there might be concern of staff and teachers and the general community about, well, is it safety even, go back to school at that point? So there are sensors, small sensors you can carry around that are fairly inexpensive that you can measure PM particulate matter, say particulate matter less than two and a half. So you might use some of those. And Hillary had talked about one in, in an education program later to help the faculty understand what the concentrations are inside and outside just with that in relative to what they are right next to the roadway. So that might be part of a, a process you might do. But the real focus would be on indoor and outdoor measurements. Outdoor measurements, where the air goes into the building and what are the indoor concentrations then in the classrooms? And what are the concentrations on the playfield? Okay? When the kid, students are outdoors. And you know, if there are mitigation measures installed at that time or at some future time, it'd be important to understand how they affect things, the sound wall or trees. The current trees, by the way, at the, at the playfield are fairly open. If you stand in the playfield and look towards I five, there's big gaps down low and gaps between the trees. That, that doesn't, that isn't on the recommended list of, of being a mitigation measure. But you don't, don't expect to get super high efficiency removal from vegetation. Okay? The measurements for an HVAC system in the building can remove ninety-plus percent of diesel particulate matter, of black carbon. Okay? Outdoors, you're not going to get anything close to that, probably twenty or thirty percent at best, okay, of removal of those kinds of particles. That's what the literature says. You know, if you do a comprehensive evaluation at the, in phase one, then you would select the most important species and those would be the ones to focus on in phase two. If you pre-focus on that, then the phase two might be the same species as phase one. In either case, you know, we would recommend diesel particulate matter and ultrafines and PM two and a half. So you do the outdoor monitoring at the same location so you can compare the data with current conditions. And you would do the indoor monitoring at a number of classrooms. There's at lea- right now, there's three HVAC systems in, in the building. If that's the way the new design is, you need to evaluate each of the three separately. And you need to look at several different kinds of classrooms. Standard classrooms. There are larger classrooms for science experiments and things like that that might have some extra ventilation for doing experiments in a hood or something. And then there could be art classes and maker classes and things like that that might be in different type buildings, different type classrooms that might be different size and should, should be evaluated as well. Again, in the phase two data analysis, you would look at the quality assurance data. You would do graphics and statistical summaries. You would compare the concentrations in the classroom and the concentrations outdoors with these EPA and state criteria. You would specifically evaluate the HVAC filtration effectiveness on, on the important pollutants and compare that to what the literature says you should be achieving and make sure that you are doing that. And summarize that and make it for public. If you have any comments on that, we're going to switch gears a little bit here in a second. So if there are any questions on this so far, maybe we can try to answer those.
Thank you very much. I have a couple of quick questions. Now, I appreciate you saying that an HVAC system optimally could pull out about ninety percent of the diesel particulate matter. Is there- Is there some reading, is there some point as you're measuring the outside air that you would come back and say, this is too much? There is no way that an HVAC system of any reasonable design could possibly make the indoor air safe?
Well, the, the criteria for diesel particulate matter is not as well documented, and the time resolution of the exposures are not like OSHA requirements for eight-hour exposures or the National Ambient Air Quality Standards. So there's also comparison with what is going on in the rest of the urban area, okay? We live in an urban area. An example is, all urban areas in the US exceed the benzene standard that EPA has set. That's mainly from gasoline, okay, from gasoline combustion. So you can't expect that outdoors at a school next to the roadway or not next to a roadway would be lower than that general urban concentration. So that's another comparison that you would make and part of the judgment, because what I hear your question being is, you know, how, how much worse is this? Is this similar to the rest of the urban area, or is it much, much worse? So we would, at that time, you would have the concentrations from outdoors at the, at the playfield for a couple of months when, when conditions are as they are. And I would expect those concentrations not to be higher than one or two micrograms per cubic meter, okay? That's what might be measured at, at some near road sites. Some, you, the traffic on I-5 in this location is high, but it's about half of the highest traffic in other places in the country, okay? Have 200,000 or 250,000 vehicles a day. This one has more like 100, 150,000. So you would expect that the concentration would be not as high as the 405 in LA, for example, or the truck 710 in LA that's mainly a truck leaving the ports concentration. So if the concentration is of that magnitude, several micrograms per cubic meter, then reducing that concentration by a factor of 10 takes it below the one-microgram level indoors. So that, that's what you would expect, and if it were a lot different than that, like you weren't getting 90% removal, then yeah, we should be concerned at that point. But the, the studies that have been done have been, have been able to demonstrate that that, that kind of efficiency or better has been done in practice. So the concentration will not be 10-micrograms per cubic meter outdoors, and therefore the indoor should not be higher than one. So that's, that's what the science says. We, you know, that's part of doing the measurements is to prove that for you and for the students and their parents and the teachers.
And then a process question between you and Dr. Burnham and Mr. Vincent. Who is going to be advising the board as to whether or not it's safe and we should proceed, or it's not, and we shouldn't?
A component of that advice is going to come from an advisory group, which will be populated by a couple of DEQ specialists, by Sonoma, if, or whoever the contractor is. We don't have a contract yet, honestly. By project managers here, because they, this needs to be coordinated between the work that's going on in the building as well as this work. And then myself. And we also, I've talked just this week to a couple of specialists. One with EPA on the East Coast, who's a specialist in vegetation screens and site and sound walls and so forth. He's willing to chime in as an ad hoc when we need his advice into that group, or for that matter, into contractors, to provide input there. Only issue with him is the availability, because he's a busy person. And I've also talked to a professor at PSU. It's not Linda George, it's another professor who is familiar with indoor air quality, has a PhD in civil engineering in that area. And he's very willing to also provide ad hoc advice about what the data says and so forth. So DEQ will help in terms of looking at what's going on, advising technically, and they will look at the data. They won't participate in a final decision. That's going to be a group decision by the committee, but I'm going to provide it. The contractor, whoever they are, will provide it, so that you'll get a lot of information from a lot of PhD people, I'll put it that way.
Can I ask about that? So at the last FAO meeting, it sounded like DEQ had, had not been willing to make any promises about any level of support that they might be able and willing to, to give on this project. Has that changed?
They're willing to give the technical support to inform the decisions of that, that group, that advisory group. They're willing to be on that group and inform the decisions of it.
Okay, so they would be full-fledged members of the advisory group?
Yes.
Okay, and what kind of TA, do we know what kind of TA would be involved?
The people who are involved?
No, I mean, if they're willing to give technical assistance, do, do you have some sense of what that would entail?
It'll entail giving advice about past monitoring, the monitoring that we're proposing, their knowledge of past, their knowledge of current monitoring procedures, and anything that, that the contractor would recommend. So they're willing to look at all the monitoring issues.
So, can I jump in?
I don't know, I have to answer other than that.
So I think what, what my concern is, and maybe Rita and other board members, is who's going to do the health risk assessment? Who's going to tell us that if you have X level in the outdoor air, it's safe for kids to be there or not? And it seems like the two likely suspects would be EPA or DEQ, and it seems like DEQ and EPA have backed out of that responsibility.
That's comparing the data to benchmarks, EPA and existing EPA and DEQ benchmarks. That's what that's talking about. The only locate, the only one of these agents that doesn't have a benchmark or a health level is the ultrafine's. But my understanding, and I've asked that question two or three times now, a lot of people, there are benchmarks, there are standards, there are clear health levels, screening levels for everything but ultrafine. So we already have that.
And we already have not just the benchmarks, but we already have significant amount of data on each of these.
That's correct. The 2009 study does have screening levels that we've likely used too. DEQ is willing to share that with us.
So there are safe levels for exposure of schoolchildren outside of schools near high-traffic roads? For everything except ultrafine particles?
You're asking if there are criteria for saying that?
I'm asking if there's a standard for safe level for children's exposure in this situation, for everything except ultrafine particles. And the ultrafine particles, is that covered by the California standard?
No, it's not.
So there, okay.
There, there is no, so, well, I think there's two things. So we, we don't do the health risk assessment part. There are people that do that. The school district has somebody that is a risk analysis person, so they interpret.
Wait, a health risk? We have a health risk assessor that's employed by the school district?
He's a risk assessor. You don't have a health risk assessor, right? So, but those people have set these, these criteria have been set with health studies and health, so measurements in health studies and measurements of health effects. And those levels have been set. But one thing to understand, most of these pollutants have no level below which there are no known effects. That's not the case. We have, we have to just admit that. We live in a world with, so, so there is no level where you can say there's no health effect from any, from any of these pollutants, okay? And EPA says this. This is not me, I'm just repeating what they say. So, so we have to ask your, and, we can't really answer your question in the exact way you posed it, I'm sorry. That's, that's just the way the community, the way it is.
Well, I understand.
That's why I gave the example of benzene. You know, we live with a potential health risk from benzene, all of us, okay? And there's no level at, below which there's no effect. EPA keeps lowering the PM two and a half standard, for example. And the studies say, well, we can't find a level where there's no health effect. There's levels where there's minimal health effects or whatever they want to define as, okay? So that's, that's why the question's a little difficult.
Well, so let me say it differently. So are there EPA or DEQ standards that say there are acceptable risk levels for these contaminants in this exposure situation?
Yes, that's, that's what we're talking about with these benchmarks or criteria, whatever we want to call them. They are levels that, that those agencies say are minimal risk level. That's what you're asking, and that's acceptable risk level. You know, and, you know, new permit, new sources in your area are entered at, if they below one in a million, okay, kinds of things. So those, that's what those levels are set relative to, okay? So, so the outdoor is potentially a problem, okay? And it's potentially a problem especially during rush hour, but if rush hour on that roadway lasts a long time, that's during school hours, okay? So that, that is an area of concern, and you know, the students may be outside for an hour a day. So, you know, these, that's the difficult place. I think, I think the indoor particulate problems can be solved properly. So, you know, one other thing, just, just in general about health effects, is that commuting on busy roadways contributes an awful lot of all of our exposure if we do that. So if these students are coming to school on a busy roadway as opposed to a neighborhood street, they're getting exposure there, too. And so, so how do you evaluate an extra hour on the playground relative to in a school bus or on a freeway coming to school? Those are difficult problems, and, and you have to add those up and, and try to see what the overall exposure is. And we, you know, if you do these kinds of measurements, you have the concentrations in those places to evaluate against these benchmarks.
Okay.
Is that, did I answer your question, sir?
Yeah, I still have some questions, but that was good.
It's difficult. It's, it's not a, it's not black or white. That's part of the problem.
Can I, can I follow up on Mike's question? So these thresholds, to the extent that they exist, about acceptable risk, are those calibrated for kids or for adults? And does it matter?
Well, many of the health studies are being done on children, okay? There's a study now 25 years going, it's called the Children's Health Study in Southern California. It is doing these kinds of health studies on children of, you know, sixth grade to high school, okay? And understanding initially their lung function, but now a lot more kinds of things and how they're affected by pollution. So those are the kinds of health studies that are used to set these benchmarks. In some cases, there are separate benchmarks for the most vulnerable, which are the youngest and the oldest in our population, okay? Your lung capacity goes down significantly when you get older, and at that point, you're more susceptible to some of these challenges, so.
Okay, I, I had a, I have a couple of questions for PPS staff, but also some questions. So let me, let me start with you with some questions about what we're testing for. So we came up with a long list of things to test for. With the possible exception of Mike, I don't think any of us can actually claim any expertise in this area. So we came up with a list. Of that list, how many of the things, how many of the items, or you're calling them species, I guess?
Compounds, species.
Okay.
They're, they're a mix, actually.
I mean, everything is important, but in order for us to get the greatest value, what would you recommend that we focus on? What could we potentially delete from the list with relatively, with limited risk? I mean, what would be your recommendation for a short list of, of species that we're looking at?
Okay, well, I, as I-
Sorry, I don't know if it's clear on one of your slides.
We can go.
Maybe I-
You did address it.
Maybe I-
So one thing that would be helpful is to get the slide presentation, so we have that.
For me?
It'd be helpful to get this, the slide presentation.
So this, this other list is probably better. So, you know, all, this is the list of compounds and species that were measured in 2009 and might be measured in a total air toxics monitoring site that the state runs for the EPA, okay? So there's all these volatile organic compounds, benzene, butadiene, things like that, metals, and then the criteria pollutants. But the major focus, the highest priority ones would be diesel particulate matter first because of what I told you about, urban areas, 80% or so of the air toxic, toxicity is from that. Ultrafine's because of their big concern, and yet we don't know what the issue is there. And PM two and a half. So those would be the biggest focus. If, if you are concerned about, what's happened in the emissions on the roadway is the cars have gotten much, much cleaner over the last few years. Diesels are being controlled in some places in the country and not in others. California and Washington have strong controls, especially around the ports.
We do not.
Oregon does not.
They're sending us your cartridge.
So, so part of the issue is the interstate trucks going through on I-5 may be a lot cleaner than the, than the local trucks on I-5. As pollution has come down, small sources have become bigger issues. So brake, brake wear particles, which are metals, have become a bigger issue just because other things are getting so much smaller that that's part of the major contribution. So that's why some of the metals are on the list. There are also industrial facilities across the freeway. That was what contributed the cadmium in the previous study.
Now, thank you very much for that, and I wanted to jump in on metals. As Director Moore said, fundamentally, we don't really have any idea what we're talking about here. The issue of metals has, has been raised to me. I suggested several of those. Do you mitigate for those in the same way, so that we might not have to look at them? Or do we do things differently if we find that they are higher? For instance, you know, do we need to be mopping down the interior of the building on a more regular basis if, if the stuff is in on the floor? I'm just making that up. I don't really know, but I want to ask the question.
Good question, Paul.
Thank you.
No, that's a really good question. So, well, maybe the analogy is lead and gasoline. They, it can't, when we had lead and gasoline, that came out as large particles out of a tailpipe, and 80 or 80% of it or more fell within 100 or 200 feet of the roadway, okay? So they didn't really, weren't the small-sized particles. Brake wear and tire wear that are generating some of the metals are mechanical processes. They're not combustion processes that generate small particles like ultrafine's. They should be of less concern for the, for health in general, okay? So if that's where the metals are coming from, if there's a metal processing plant- So, if that's where the metals are coming from, if there's a metal processing plant, metals on the other side of the freeway, that might be more concerned, because the metals and the particles from that would be formed at high temperature and could be very small particles and travel long distances and be ingested into your lung. So, it depends on which of these sources you might be concerned about. And that's part of the reason that you might do a more comprehensive analysis initially, is to make sure you understand what the sources are in the area, not just the freeway, but other kinds of things.
Thank you very much for that distinction, I appreciate that very much. Yes, I believe that we do have metal smelting going on across the freeway.
Then, then you could use this metals monitor, it can measure twenty metals at the same time, and you could, it runs continuously, you can get wind direction data during short time periods when peaks might be high for given metals, and evaluate that, if that's up for concern.
Yeah, we like to use continuous data with, with meteorology. It really helps you sort of segment where the high concentrations might be coming from. It helps you kind of actually point back to the source, sources, and, so that can be really useful. And this is a relatively new kind of methodology in the last few years, that allows us to actually do those measurements on a hourly basis.
So, I'm gonna, um, just in terms of a time check, I'm gonna ask Director Bailey if you had a last, a last question, and then I think the conversation can continue in the FAA committee, or?
Well, I, I don't, I don't think we're gonna have the Sonoma folks here for the next FAA meeting, so-
If that's the pleasure of the board?
Take advantage of this opportunity, if we can.
We, we also have a couple more slides to talk about. There's a couple more parts. There's another separate, uh, part to, to educate. But if you have questions on this part, we're willing to try to answer them. I, I did hear one other, one other part of the question here that I didn't answer, which, which was, do you mitigate the same way for those metals as you would for some of the particles? And if they're from combustion and very small and of the same size as diesel particulate matter, like they might be from metal smelting, then yes, the mitigations processes are the same. They're the same sized particle, that's what's really gonna determine the effectiveness of the particle removal, okay? So, the breakware, which might be mechanically generated in larger particles, you know, they're well removed in the filtration system, they also fall out faster. Smaller particles have weeks and even months of lifetime, okay, in the, in the atmosphere. So, I think that answers the second part that I didn't, that I missed, sorry.
Why don't, why don't you continue with your presentation, then we can ask?
Not, not too much left to do, so we'll, we'll show you. What's up, I have to move my head here. You're all gonna have a PhD in air quality now by the end of this. So, um, one of the things that's really important, when, if you're gonna set out some monitoring near a school, people are gonna have questions. What are you doing? What are you, you know, what are you measuring? What does that mean? Like you're, like you're asking us. And so, um, it's really important to conduct, you know, we, we really care about making sure that people understand, you know, what, what these measurements are. And so, um, we thought it would be really important to have stakeholder, teacher, student education and outreach, you know, to make sure that everybody knows what's happening. You know, that's very transparent, and, and, you know, that there's some, explain the science behind it. Um, and so, you know, we'd like to, you know, talk about air pollution, um, air quality, what, what the measurement program is, why we're measuring certain things, how it's being measured, um, and then also leading it into, how can the student reduce their exposure and their contribution to air pollution, you know? Maybe that's how they commute to school, or something like that. Um, and then also, um, can students get engaged in trying to help change things in their community, like an anti-idling program or something to reduce emissions? So, that was something that, you know, I think would be really useful in this kind of endeavor. There's also a, a program that we've, we developed called Kids Making Sense, and, um, it's a STEM-based, um, curriculum for middle school, high school students. It's also next-generation, science standards meets those. And, um, what it does is it allows us to, you know, or teachers to provide environmental education, provide them with, students with a measurement system. I realize I left it back up in my, in my briefcase. It's about this big, you wanna go get it, thanks. Um, and it allows, you know, basically, you teach in the classroom, um, you then send the kids out for, you know, to do some measurements with these small sensors. They discover things that they hadn't thought about before, and then, um, you know, oh, it's dustier when there's a, you know, soccer game going on or something. And then helping them interpret the data. And one of the, one of the most fun things that I've actually done as a scientist, 'cause I think it's really important to get out there and, and, you know, and teach, and teach children about is, uh, the interactions that we've had with the students. We do Google Hangouts with them, as, you know, as a scientist, they can ask us any questions, um, and just how engaged the students get with air pollution and, and exploring various lab, you know, there's some lab experiments, um, there's curriculum, you know, the guidance to the teachers, and the handouts to the students, and this instrument called an Air Beam. And when it's paired with a phone, you can see what the concentration is as you walk around, and it provides a map, and it goes up on the internet, and you get to see where you've been. And we've conducted these, um, programs in, across the, across the world, actually Thailand and, and other locations, multiple schools here in the US. And, um, seeing the, sort of the, the spark of the students as they're hands-on, and seeing, you know, wow, when I'm standing behind a bus and that big black smoke comes out, it really shows high concentrations. They're learning that sort of linkages between those things. And then also working with the teachers and seeing the light go on with them too, on different scientific methodology, and how to, you know, what can you control for and what can't you control for as far as variables? It's a, it's a really exciting, um, program that we've been involved with, so, sorry, very excited about it. So, um, potentially you could come, I'm gonna skip now to the science again, but we can get in, 'cause we're almost done. You could, um, come back after a few, a couple of years and see, to, you know, do some other measurements to make sure that your mitigation measures are still working. I know that in a project that Paul was involved with, they came back and the wrong filters have been put into the system, and so it was no longer as efficient, and so that was caught, um, and then corrected. And so, there's some things to just keep, to make sure that the system is operating properly, you know, so that your mitigation is still working. Again, we talked all the deliverables that, from this kind of project would be made available to the public. There's a, a post-schedule here, basically trying to get started as soon as possible. And initially, you have some discussions with the HVAC, as we, as Paul was mentioning, the HVAC design. And then also, a little ways through, we do some interim results. We're not gonna wait till, you know, six months later and tell you what's going on, because a lot of this data can be collected continuously, so we have a very good handle on what's going on, and we can summarize that and have an interim, you know, discussion about what we're seeing. And that, that can then, again, as you were asking, Mr. Anthony, that how do you, you know, how do you, how does that inform whether or not are we gonna get low enough levels? Um, and so that can be answered relatively soon in the process. And then there's, you know, later, um, reporting at the end. But this just sort of shows it's, this is a, it's a long haul here, you know, 'cause should I have everything ready before, before school starts, and then do the measurements while school's in session? I think that's all we have. So, basically, there's a, you know, we've talked about this comprehensive air quality monitoring indoors and outdoors, um, making recommendations on mitigation measures outside, and also with the HVAC and filtration system, and how would we have measurements that would look at the effectiveness of those? And then bringing in an educational, since we are talking about a school, bringing in an educational component that engages the classrooms in, in looking at air quality around their school and in the school. So, I think that's all we have. Thank you.
Could you go back to this, two slides now, that, that one right there?
Yep.
So, at what point on that timeline do you have enough data for, um, someone to make a recommendation about whether the mitigation, um, is enough, or, um, how we should proceed?
Well, I think there's a couple points here. One, one is the outdoor measurements that, in the school field before, in the, in this early, early twenty eighteen. So, if those are in ranges that one might expect, are the mitigation measures indoors expected to, to achieve the result you want? So, that's one thing I talked about briefly on black carbon as an example. You know, the outdoor, what are the outdoor concentrations? Compare those to other outdoor, near-road monitoring sites. Are they way out of line? Or are they at or below more relative to the traffic at this location? So, that's, that's your test early on, qualitatively. But if it's way out of line with something that you found, we found other places, we and others, I'm not, in that case, the community, what's published, if it's way out of line on something, then that, that would cause you concern at that point. So, that's, if you started monitoring in February, that might be by March, that you had preliminary results that were way out of whack.
I see a few weeks of data.
I, I wouldn't expect that, but, but, um, that would, that could raise the bell if you were higher concentrations than other places where they really shouldn't be higher.
Um, this might be a conversation for another time, but on the circumstance that Harriet Tubman is deemed the air quality is unsafe, um, would we, would we do analysis of other schools in our district that are also similar, in similar situations, like Benson and Lincoln are next to major highways, and Cleveland is on Powell Boulevard, which are also right next to highways and industrial areas similar to Harriet Tubman, because then we're talking on like a district-wide issue.
Except for us, for the board.
That's a great question, though, yeah.
Well, I think we'd be looking to staff for a recommendation, um, based on that. So, the answer, the answer is yes, Moses, I think we would ask for a recommendation.
So, we, we've got, um, I, I'm learning. We've got a fair amount of information already about the air quality. Some of it from previous EPA study, some of it from research that's being done by other How, I guess my, my question, how much more info do we need? What, like what value added would there be for doing this, the study that you're suggesting? How, how, and, and I don't even know how much we're talking about in terms of money, but I'm guessing it's substantial. So, I, I guess I wanna know, like, how much more info is this gonna give us beyond what we already know?
Well, I, that's a good question. I, I guess I would divide it into a couple pieces. One is, you're gonna design a new HVAC system with filtration in this school. Does it really work like it's supposed to be designed? That's, I would, I would say that's what you wanna be able to tell the students that it does. And the way to do that is to, is to make measurements and to prove that. So, the indoor/outdoor measurements for the classroom on a new HVAC system that's being designed here should, should be, should be evaluated, okay? So, that's, that's the phase two, I guess, under, under this program. Phase one, um, you know, it depends what the board wants to be able to tell the community, the stakeholders, the students, from my view, okay? You know, do you wanna say you've tested everything that's been looked at before, and the only things of concern are these, two or three or four, and, and we're working on mitigating those? Or do you wanna say we use scientific knowledge and understanding to eliminate some of those from past studies? And, you know, that's, that's a question of what confidence you want, what confidence the scientists can tell you, okay? You know, the traffic may be slightly different on this freeway than another freeway. Is that of high enough concern to, to do some more measurements? Since two thousand and nine, the traffic's gotten worse on I five. Uh, controls have gone in on light-duty vehicles that have cleaned them up, so there's counter-producing things. What is the balance between the improvements and the, the higher traffic? Okay, so, you know, do you wanna use scientific judgment on that, or do you wanna do measurements? Those are really the questions, I think, to, to try to address. I think you can eliminate some of those. I don't think, NO2, you don't need to do. It doesn't, it's not gonna exceed the standard at this location, it doesn't at other locations, okay, for example.
But in your opinion, are there any categories there on which we have no relevant data?
Ultra fines. And they're very limited at this location, or these locations around here on black carbon, on diesel particulate matter. I mean, there's, there's the site further south on, on I five that's a new site that's been in operation three years, two years? Two year, two or three years, that has black carbon as a surrogate for diesel particulate matter. So, similar traffic to what's up here at Tubman.
The, the challenge to us, I think, is that this is a very significant testing protocol that you've outlined, and I understand absolutely that you're just responding to, you know, what the board asked for in terms of scope, potential scope for testing. But, um, the degree of the scope of the testing is directly related to, uh, the resources that we have to directly invest in mitigation. And so, to my mind, we need to be as judicious as possible in our testing protocol, and make use of information that is already available, and really focus our efforts on mitigation.
Follow, follow-up question on that. You've tested it in a number of states, number of conditions. Is it fairly predictable, based on traffic flow, what the results are in terms of parts per million, or something like that?
Well, if we take diesel particulate matter as the example, and it's the one that contributes the most to the toxicity, you know, the existing data matches the number, traffic of diesels on the, on the roadway fairly well with, uh, concentrations nearby. So, there's the seven-ten, this is a free, a newly built, well, it's now a few years old, but a newly built freeway to relieve other freeways of truck traffic leaving the ports of LA and Long Beach, going north. It has thirty percent or more trucks on it, okay? The concentrations measured next to that roadway were significantly higher than we measured in Las Vegas that had twelve percent, okay? And this freeway here has something like fifteen to twenty. It's likely to be in between, but it's several years later too, so there's other, like I said earlier, there's other factors that are raising or lowering that effect. So, in general, yes, um, but, you know, um, if you're gonna, if you're gonna prove that the indoor mitigation works, you have to measure the outdoor anyway, okay? So, um, does that answer your question?
Um, in, in part, yeah. I, I don't understand the part about the indoor. I mean, wouldn't you know the indoor worked, 'cause you measured the air quality indoors, and so you'd know what the concentrations of the species were?
Right. So, if you measure indoor, you can compare the concentration directly with the criteria that are established.
Right.
If you measure the outdoor, you're understanding, number one, what the students are exposed to when they're outdoors for their play area. And you're also calculating the measurement efficiency of the filter and comparing that with the literature as well, to make sure it's as efficient as it should be. If that's only sixty or seventy percent efficient, even if the indoor concentration may be acceptable, it's not doing as well as it can, okay? So, that's-
That's more an operational.
Well, yes, but maybe there's an operational procedure that's built in that's not working right, or maybe the right filters aren't being used, or-
We could substantially.
So, you could do better than that. So, that's part of that, too. You're saying, you know, the question was asked, how low can you get? Well, if you can do better without much more cost, just doing it right, you should do that. So, that's why I think we recommend measuring the outdoor at the air inlet and the in-classroom concentrations both.
And the second question is, what are the outside- And second question is, what are the outside mitigation measures that can be put up in a relatively short period of time? And roughly, how effective are they?
The, the results for mitigation of, by, by vegetation, this is maybe stands of bushes and trees that are dense, is mixed in the literature. Okay? Somewhere between five or 10% removal to 20 to 40% removal of particles upwind to downwind. In concert with sound walls, it seems to be better, but the experiments are still limited in scope. And in fact, EPA and California Air Resources Board are funding new studies to, to further understand what that is, planting trees next to roadways, near sound walls, without sound walls, to better measure what that effectiveness is. It's not going to be 80%. It's not going to be as good as indoors, so.
So a sound wall is a wall that makes noise?
Well, the simple, the simple explanation of what a sand wall does is the air comes and hits a sound wall-
Is it sand or sound?
Sound.
Sound wall, yeah. So these were originally designed around freeways just to drive the sound up instead of it going into a community. The deal is, if it's 20 feet high, say, it in general dilutes the pollution by a factor of two of that. So it forces the air to go up over that, and then that dilutes it because now the air is from 40, 40 feet down. So it sort of dilutes the air a factor of two right at the point of action. And concentrations of pollution downwind of that show that the concentrations are lower than if no sound wall were there. But it's, it's just dilution. It's not any physical, other physical process than, than that. Okay? So combining a sound wall and vegetation that might actually absorb some of the pollution or filter it in a way, like being filtered in the, in the HVAC system, can remove more than just the sound wall would. So those are the strategies, but the, you know, the research is, is mixed on the performance of, of these outdoor mitigation measures. Another mitigation measure which may not work here, in Las Vegas, the traffic was much less in the middle of the day than it was at rush hour. So not having the students outdoors on PE at 7:00 AM when the school started, when the high school started, is, is part of the mitigation measure that you can have. So part of the purpose of doing the measurements here is to really see what the diurnal pattern is and see if that's a potential mitigation measure, not to have PE early in the day. Now, this roadway is backed up a lot of the time during the day, but the atmosphere acts differently during the middle of the day than it does in the morning. It's, it's restricted by inversions in the morning and during the middle of the day it's not. Is that enough to dilute the concentrations during the middle of the day such that it's much safer to be outdoors in the playfield? Those are the kinds of things you would learn from this phase one study that could help design mitigation measures.
Are there seasonal differences as well?
There's season, sure, there's seasonal differences, too. There's more inversions in the wintertime. There's more mixing in the whole atmosphere during the summer and during stronger wind time periods. So it depends on wind speed and, and the general weather patterns as well.
And a final rhetorical question. If it was the state highway department that crammed this highway through right next to a school 60 years ago, why are we the ones that are having to deal with it?
Excellent question.
Governor Brown? I actually had like a kind of similar question about would it, I guess, almost be worth it about contacting the city or something? Because we're talking about how the Oregon regulations are more lax than less tight, and it's going to be such a significant issue to our students and being the largest urban school district in Oregon, would it be worth our time to contact the city about doing that? Because if we're truly an educational institution, then we want to be able to preserve the future for our students, that they can make their impact later in life. Because it seems like it's a pretty significant issue that we've been talking about for like two hours, so.
Thank you, Delegate Tran, because we heard as part of the presentation, some, you know, environmental ed and some science lessons we could incorporate to understand it, but we skipped over talking about what things the adults could do to try to talk about the root cause of these issues, like trucks in Oregon and the standards that we have for their emissions, for instance. And it makes a lot of sense what our student leader is saying. And also, I, I have to say, the very real fact that they only plowed under majority-minority neighborhoods.
Yep.
It was a brutal displacement.
So I, I think FAO is going to be continuing to track this roughly every two weeks. And I think as we look ahead to a legislative session, I think it might be, it might be worth our time to craft a, a letter to Governor Brown and DOT and the city and anybody else we can think of to start talking about the issues at hand and what kind of assistance we could use to, to help with, not only with Tubman, but with all the other schools that, where this is an issue. So I wanted, I know we're way over time, but I wanted to ask one more question of the Sonoma folks. So I understand you're going to be doing a lot of testing, and out of the testing results, there are going to be some, we might, we might be able to design mitigation strategies. Is part of your proposal making those recommendations for mitigation strategies?
Certainly advising and making recommendations on them, yes. But there are other people that can do that, too. That's why Rich Baldoff might be, from the EPA, might be on the technical advisory committee and others as well. So, you know, it wouldn't be us exclusively, there are others that have some experience in some of these areas that could, could advise on that.
Okay.
So, but yeah, we would, you know, anything we know, we want to help provide because the ultimate goal is to reduce the impact on the students and teachers at this school.
Okay, thank you. So, oh, go ahead, Mike.
I just, well, I just had a couple of quick technical questions, if that's okay. Just to make sure I got this right. So for DPM, there's a California risk level? Okay.
Correct.
And then for the PM 2.5, EPA has a risk level?
Well, they have a National Ambient Air Quality Standard.
Okay, that's what we would use.
Right.
And then, but for the ultrafine particles, we don't have a regulatory level isn't available.
That's correct.
So is, is anyone putting together risk data to set a level for UFP? I mean, where would we go for that?
Right. Well, the Health Effects Institute, HEI, did a, did a report, a review of all the data on ultravines, I think, two years ago, and summarized that, and they're going to do it again, and EPA is doing it as well and participating in that. So there are, there are-
So a risk assessor could help us with that.
Right. There are processes going on to do that. If there's more health data on ultravines, then they will review that and try to evaluate whether that helps set a level.
So then just two more quick things. So the HVAC will take out the ultrafine particles?
Well, it will, it will. I mean, the, the diesel particulate matter is a major contributor to ultravines.
Okay.
Okay? So if we say the experience at LA schools and Las Vegas schools and Salt Lake schools is 90% plus with a well-designed system, that's including a lot of the ultravines.
Ultrafins, okay.
Okay? Now, there haven't been super detailed evaluation of individual particle sizes, okay? But, but these bulk measures that we have, they've done quite well on.
And then what's in the ultrafine? Is that metals, or it's just a, we don't know?
Most of that is organic carbon-ish type combustion. These are from-
The combustion process.
Light-duty and diesel contributor, you know, combustion processes that produce these particles. But recognize, this is like a highly porous material that can collect anything on it. So it can collect gases that absorb on it, it could, it could do metals if there were metals in the combustion process, et cetera. So we don't, the health studies don't really have the perfect measure of these. That's why I'm saying these aren't compounds or species. These are-
Got it.
Measurement-defined compounds.
So I have just a couple of questions about our own process here in determining our scope and protocols for testing. So this is one contractor who has responded to our request. What is our process for getting other perspectives on what the appropriate scope of testing and potential mitigation might be? And then how do we get a sense of what the costs might be so that we can weigh it relative to the overall? Because this all falls under the umbrella of what we've authorized for the Tubman overall, right? We would not be authorizing individual contract for testing?
Yeah, so we have another firm who we've talked to, and they're putting something together by end of week. And then we have a third firm entity that we'd like to sit down with and ask them what they would do in some comprehensive or some components of it that might be able to deliver, and that's here in Portland area. So we're going to try to get this part done by end of week, early next week. We're, we're moving fast on this. My concern with the, if you look at the schedule, I'm glad we're, we're stuck on that slide. Our next FAO is January 16, is it not? Or is there one more in here? Or do we need to ask for a special one?
We're going to whip another one in.
Yeah, I think we're, we're going to get another one in.
Okay, because otherwise, our first blue dot will be late in terms of getting equipment and getting it going.
So I, I'm, I'm looking at Roseanne, we're probably going to be looking at the first week of January.
Okay, that'll help.
And so there, we would get cost estimates and we would have a discussion around the scope of our testing protocol.
I think we're going to err closest to apples and apples. All right? So we'll have three areas of, you say, cost estimates, but they're, they're going to be proposal dollars for each of the, what if we did the top area species? You know, there's the comprehensive all 11, that's in your, it's in your board resolution. And I think we'll get better aligned with two, the three different phases and possible methodologies. We'll align that with the other one or two and bring something that the FAO can take a look at and give some, give some approval so we can move forward and get some equipment ordered and get it placed.
Because I, I would definitely like to see, you know, a few different scenarios for scope-
Okay.
-with projected costs attached to them, and at the same time, a expert opinion about the data that already exists that we don't need to replicate so that we can focus our resources on mitigation.
Okay, thank you.
So I think just in terms of the board's process moving forward, we would expect a recommendation. So it looks like you're doing your due diligence and you've got an advisory committee that I hope that you would come in January with first a recommendation to the FAO committee and then bring it to the full board. But I think that's-
And I, we don't need to talk about it right now because we're already late, but I think I would like to get more information about the advisory group and who is, who is on it. It sounds like right now you're looking at a number of ad hoc people, and I think, given, given the speed with which we have to move on this, I think ad hoc is tricky. And I think there are, I think there are resources locally who would be willing to participate on a, on a regular basis. So when we talk in January, it would be, it would be great to hear who-
Great.
You know, who we've nailed down for advisory group.
Okay. We have a pretty good bubble diagram with a lot of that. I did not want to present it tonight because we haven't gotten around to everyone, and also I want enough background each one, not just their name, so you understood their pedigree and exactly what they do and what they bring to the table. So would have been a little too presumptuous to put that up here tonight, but we'll do that. If I can, if I can fast forward to next fall and we get all this done, and it's amazing, as we're entering into the budget cycle for next year, these filters, 90%, 92%, whatever, they're only as good as our maintenance and operations budgets and staff can change them out, or they're going to back up-
Always working it, Jerry.
Way to make a use of our plug.
And, and they're, and they're going to, and they're going to back up if we don't stay on top, coming up from Southern California. We change them out at least twice, twice a year. We have two people who change them throughout the district, and by the time they're done, they go back and they change them out again. I mean, so it's that. Secondly-
We remember what those gunked-up water filters looked like.
That's exactly right. So secondly, we are at any time 30 to 50 custodian short, not just our maintenance folks on the filters. So right now, our level of cleanliness in any of our sites is a disappointing moderately dingy, and our custodial staff and union doesn't appreciate that either. So if we take care of all this outdoor and we fix the indoor, we're going to roll right back to the again. I just have to put that out there. Thank you.
And Superintendent Guerrero, are you aware that moderately dingy is a real term?
It's a real term. A scientific-
That's, that's our designation.
That's definitely it.
Great. Thank you all very much for the informative discussion. And Mr. Vincent, for those of us who aren't on the FAO committee, if we can get the slides?
Yes.
Great, thanks.
Thank you. Thanks to Sonoma, too, for the work you've done so far. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I tried.
So we're now, we're going to board committee and conference reports. Vice Chair Moore has already more than adequately reported on what the finance audit and operations committee has been working on. Director Anthony, you had a report?
I have a couple of brief reports here. Last week, I attended one of the semi-regular meetings of the Local Public Safety Coordinating Council, which really does go by the acronym LIPSEC. It's convened by the mayor and the county chair. It involves the DA, the chief of police, the chief of police for Gresham, Multnomah County Sheriff. It's a cast of thousands. It usually involves more than 100 people. And I wanted to let you know that Multnomah County's Comprehensive Gang Assessment Implementation, this is the first year of it, and it's going very well. It's based on a program the US Department of Justice came out with in 2009, comes with a very long pedigree. They have been compiling considerable amount of data on the community and law enforcement, demographics, and community perceptions and resources. And they are starting to make very good use of that information, particularly in conjunction with Portland Public Schools. Unfortunately, Superintendent Guerrero, they had a meeting for all of the superintendents in the county three weeks before you started. I think it would be very good to be able to get you an update on that. And I do especially want to call out, our domestic violence prevention course, Boys Into Men, continues to get just rave reviews. It's absolutely wonderful. Recruiting for vacant SRO positions is going unprecedentedly well. The Police Bureau is just shocked at both the number of people who are applying to be SROs and how passionate they are about working with our young people, which is just terrific. Finally, it was drawn to my attention that Portland Public Schools needs to develop and implement a policy for making naloxone. I'm sorry, I didn't say that right. Naloxone readily available in our schools. Naloxone is the emergency medication for treating opioid overdoses. Unfortunately, opioids are becoming so ubiquitous and they are beginning to appear so frequently in public spaces as uncontained powders, the chances of inadvertent accidental- in public spaces as uncontained powders, the chances of inadvertent accidental overdose are becoming unacceptably high. Uh, the consequences for delay are potentially fatal. I've been in touch with some of our school nurses, the MESD, and with the Oregon Health Authority. Uh, there are no legal or outside policy barriers to PPS making naloxone available other than implementing a policy and providing for training. Uh, we simply have to take the initiative. Uh, we would need to address questions such as in which schools to stock it, uh, whether our high schools, our middle schools, or K-12, uh, whether to train just school nurses or SROs or school secretaries or other faculty or office staff, and where it should be stored. Uh, I think that this should probably go to FAO for a recommendation to staff.
So, um, just a question, is that a policy with a big P or more of a, this is an operational, just, um,
I think.
Not, not, not say a board level?
Ideally, it would be with a small P and an operational issue. I want to make sure that we get something done. So if having it come from the board would help Superintendent Guerrero, I think we should do that. If not, hey, great.
Well, I appreciate you bringing attention to this, Director Anthony. This is obviously a, a crisis in, in a lot of cities everywhere, actually, um, but especially if we're talking about our youth. Um, and there's something we can do, uh, that could be, you know, help in a situation, hopefully, that we don't experience in our schools. But, um, I'd be, I'd be interested in working with our general counsel to see what, what we may need to do in, in the way of, you know, is this just a practice that we do, is just part of our typical, um, health efforts? Um, or, or would a policy make sense in this case? It's, it's also important to think about, you know, it also helps to sort of set the example as well, because we have a lot of, uh, smaller districts where I'm hearing that this is an issue, uh, especially in our rural communities. Um, I know as we've gone around meeting with, um, a, a lot of, uh, leaders out in the broader community, especially in the health sector, and I know that our, uh, Senior Director for Strategic Partnerships is here, Jonathan Garcia. I know that there would be people who would be very interested in partnering with us, um, in, in an effort like this. So let, this is, this is a great one for you to, to highlight this evening.
Good, thank you.
And this is the same drug that's so extraordinarily expensive that the Multnomah County is currently suing the federal government over it. So something we'd want to talk about with our school-based health centers. But even Multnomah County can't have it, doesn't have it to the extent that, anywhere near that it's necessary.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I have some good names and contact information for you. Uh, also, I've got some vignettes I will share privately. Uh, also, this last week, I was at, uh, Portland Community College's safety meeting at the Cascade Campus, and I did just want to highlight, uh, one fact and an ask of the superintendent. In Portland, it is illegal to go into the oncoming lane to pass a stopped bus. This is starting to be a very serious issue for students from Jefferson High School. Uh, they are being placed at very great risk. Uh, and it's, it's very topical for me because it's right in front of my home. Um, I would be very interested, before I start complaining to the Police Bureau, uh, do we have this as a problem at other schools? And if you could ask the senior directors, I would think they'd be the best source. I would really appreciate hearing. And then very briefly, this final thing, uh, all of the board members received little holiday cards from the Standard Insurance Company, and I did just want to mention, the Standard is our provider for long-term disability for our teachers and staff. Um, coming in 2018, we are going to see a pretty fabulous, uh, employee mental health program coming out of the Standard. They are actually the best, most cutting-edge mental health, uh, care provider in the nation. They are, they are really, I'm sorry, the Standard is the Standard, and, uh, we very much need that. So there will be some good news coming in 2018.
Thank you, Director Anthony. Um, Representative Tran, did you have a report tonight? No? Director Comstam, do you have anything? But Director Rosen or Bailey, any committee meetings or?
Uh, no, we were scheduled to have, uh, enrollment and forecasting last night, but staff requested that we punt it to the new year to give them more time to prepare around the proposed, uh, Rigler-Scott issue.
And then I would just say, the Policy and Governance Task Force, there's a meeting set for January 5th, um, for revisions to the complaint policy. This is work that was started previously, and also an update on the public records policy, and potentially a review of nepotism policy. Um, so with that, is there any other board business? So we're going to, um, now turn to the business agenda. I want to just have a couple, the, the business agenda actually has substantive issues in it, and I just want to specifically call them out. Uh, first, there's a memorandum of understanding with the Portland Association of Teachers. This is settling a grievance. We reached this tentative agreement, um, as part of the mediation, ongoing mediation process, and we need to vote on it tonight so that, um, we can implement January 1. Um, there's also an increment of funds for Miller-Nash pending a more comprehensive plan to diversify our internal, external, uh, legal, um, capacity. Um, this was brought forth, this amount was brought forth in consultation with the interim gen, general counsel, um, and will allow for coverage of some ongoing cases, um, while at the same time stepping down the amount and providing, um, space for this, um, more comprehensive plan to be rolled out. In addition, there's, um, on the business agenda, an additional $125,000 for the investigation team for the Whitehurst, uh, investigation. The scope, timeline, and budget to complete the investigation was discussed last month by the board, and just as a, that 125 will allow the completion of the witness interviews, um, the analysis of all the PPS documents and policies so that they can make their recommendations and conclude their draft report. In addition, there is an item that's an approval of a third-party sales, um, that, this is the topic we discussed last board meeting, that, uh, we needed a waiver for. In addition, we also discussed the Hillsdale Market last time. I had a question about whether, uh, we had full cost recovery and district staff, uh, I think Jerry's gone, but district staff assures us that, um, there is no cost to PPS for hosting the market there. Um, they do all the cleanup, setup, uh, so there's no cost to the district. It's just a standard lease agreement. Um, so we have some substantive items in our business agenda. Um, I want to ask the board members if there's any items you'd like to pull for a separate discussion and vote. If yes, let me know. Okay, uh, Ms. Houston, are there any changes to the business agenda?
No.
Do I have a motion and a second to adopt the business agenda?
So I'm a.
Second. Moved by Director Anthony, seconded by Director Comstam. Um, Ms. Houston, is there any public comment? No, there's not. Is there any board discussion on the business agenda? Everybody's talked out? Okay. The board will now vote on the business agenda. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes. All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Yes?
Yes.
Noes? Representative Tran?
Yes.
The business agenda is approved by a six-to-zero vote with Representative Tran voting yes. Um, so we're, um, following this, going to have, um, what I hope is a relatively, um, brief, uh, work session. Uh, but on behalf of the board, I want to wish everyone happy holidays, Happy New Year. Um, and this meeting is adjourned, and we won't meet again until 2018.